Okay, everybody, we are going to start the town board meeting for the town of St. Joseph on January 11th at 6 o'clock PM. Statement of public notice.
Hereby provided a written notice of the agenda of the public meeting as stated below. There is an opportunity for public comment as noted on the agenda upon recognition by the presiding officer.
Roll call, everyone is here except for Matt Moore. Take a motion to adopt the agenda.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it passed. We'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our upcoming meetings are on here. We also have works sessions scheduled for this 18th of January that did not make this agenda. All of these reports are in your drive, but we will take joint library off for the future since we are no longer part of the joint library as of the 1st of January. Jay is here, does anyone have any questions for him? Most of his report does go to our closed session, but if anyone has any questions for him, he is here. Okay, Jay, nothing else to add? I see Anton, anything else to add that's what's on the agenda?
Can internet broadband come up, number 10 come off under?
Sure, we can take it off. And then Nina, do you have anything to add that's not on the Parks Committee? Yeah, that's on here for 7 o'clock. Okay, and then Chris, nothing else on Public Works?
No.
And our work session is at 6?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes care of that public comment. Anyone here want to make a public comment on something that is not on the agenda? You can come either to the microphone there or the microphone there. Hi Jay.
Hi, I'm a citizen, page 1433, 47th Street.
Can you turn that on? It's a button on top. There.
Nine days, my dog barks, now my dog barks, she's in a house and there's a strange vehicle. Be it a FedEx truck, back end UPS truck, something like that. Most of the time it's for nothing, to tell her to be quiet and quit barking. When I got up to tell her to quit barking, and I look out the window and, my goodness, it's a fire truck. And I'm like, holy buckets, that's going to neighbors. A little exciting in the neighborhood. So of course I put on my shoes and jacket, out I go, tell the dog to stay inside, don't want to interrupt the fire. And they are rolling hoes and fueling stuff. My neighbor had a chimney fire, which was quite damaging. It got into the roof after the structure on the top. But I went out of course and see what's going on and watch. And I have a little experience in that event, 20 years. Still waters fire department myself. Once a training officer with fighters association in Minnesota. So I've seen a little bit of fighter action in my day. But I have to tell you, I was very, very proud of our fire department here in St. Joe. They performed admirably. I watched them. Every action the chief was directing the activity. They followed every safety procedure, proper fire procedure. They were very successful in extinguishing the blades. Instead of just taking a saw and cutting the roof open. They very carefully took the impact driver and removed the tin. It's metal roof next door. And so they didn't do any further damage than necessary, used a very small amount of water. So there wasn't huge flooding and damage inside the residence. And it just was amazing. It was almost like watching the ballet. Every move was for a purpose. And it was part of the show and it went smoothly. They stayed on to make sure that there was nothing that was going to rekindle and tear everything. And as a citizen of town of St. Joseph, I must say I was very, very, very proud of the performance of our fire department. Not to mention the fact that my neighbor's house burned down. So just, you know, we talk about the fire department, the need for equipment, training, all this, all the time. But I just watched it firsthand, beginning to get, and I'm not easily impressed, but I was impressed.
Well, thank you, Jay, for that comment. I think all of us should, if we have not used this fire department and their first responders and have had no need to, it's great. But if you've had to, they're exceptional. Exceptional. So thank you. Thank you, Zach and your staff over there for doing a great job. Anyone else who wishes to speak to public comment? All right, then we will go to the first thing on our agenda. The first thing on our agenda is a waiver for a driveway separation for 295 122nd Avenue Hudson for Dan Martin. Dan, if you want to come up to the window or window up to the table. Dan is my next door neighbor, so I'm going to recuse myself from this matter. And I've asked Chris Marshall to take this on for the board. So if you want to do so, go right ahead, Chris.
Good evening, Dan. Share with us what your situation is.
Point, I've provided pictures of everything. Yep. So we've lived there since COVID-2022. Last winter, obviously, was a heavy winter and it was our first winter out here. It's a steep driveway. Indicated that with pictures provided to you guys. You know, there's quite a switchback on it. I'm just asking to move it so I can have a straight shot into my downtown parking at my garage. And I'll take about three feet of grade out of the slope. And it'll be safer and we'll be within San Jose County setbacks.
Are you, is your intention to re-blacktop it?
Yep.
Okay. And then you'll restore the township ditch to standards?
Yeah, there's a culvert there. We'll also be dragging that culvert down and reusing it.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions?
Mine's a procedural question in which I understand the documentation that you presented. What I do not know the answer to is since this involves County Road V, I have, and I have two questions actually. Does the county need to weigh on this bit, or does this have to go to county for approval even upon our, with our, upon our recommendation would be the question?
I know I was after this word meeting, I was going to call the county and just put it past them to make sure they understood. And if they had any concerns or interest with that.
That was my only question because other county setback questions that we are issues that we've run into that I'm familiar with. We made, okay, I understand that piece and the other piece, and I'm just want it so it's a drop dead answer. There's a stop sign on your road if I remember right. Do we have any minimum setback requirements from that steps, stop sign to the center of his driveway? Jay? Jay shaking his head.
No.
Okay, so that was the other one. Do you have any input you can provide me with regard to my question on County Road V and the county on, do we need their, do they need?
I, I don't believe we have to get them involved.
There's no, no need for the county, the county's restriction, ours is 200 feet.
Ours? No, he's the county one.
Driveway is 150 feet, they allow less. And so the objective with both towns ordinance and the counties is for safety purposes. In the case of this, with 122nd Street, it's a low volume access road for only the homes that are there. So it should not be, have a negative impact on, on safety.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I understand it. I'm prepared to make a motion if no one else has any questions.
Please make a motion.
I moved that the setback variance from the center of County Road V to the driveway for parcel ID number 030207340-200 for the Daniel Martin family at 229, 29, excuse me, 295 122nd Avenue be approved.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Variance or waiver?
I'm sorry, that would be a waiver. Okay. I move that, I'm going to amend my motion to state that it's an application for a waiver to be approved.
Second. All those in favor? Aye.
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 I'm going to also make another motion for to direct our clerk's office to double check all fees that have been paid. And to, if there's any differences versus what was paid versus what was owed or vice versa in regard to this action. Double check it and if need be, take the proper action. Reconcile anything.
Just to make sure. Oh.
You can still add.
For a comment, the application I have in front of me is an application for variance.
Oh, there's a second one.
I only have the one in the G drive and it says application for variance.
And that's the only one I had also.
Tell him that. You have to tell him I can't.
This was originally set up as a variance and then after StanTech had reviewed it, they determined it should be a waiver and not a variance.
Did he have to fill anything else out differently?
He did not fill out another application. We just
transferred the information.
Yeah.
Okay, and is there a different fee schedule for that?
Yeah, we have already, we've already sent him a check for the escrow difference. And the fee, the application fee, there's $150 difference that he'll be getting as well.
Okay, I think just for records possibly have some waiver application finished in place of the variance application, just so we have it on file. And then we'd be good, wouldn't it?
Yeah. That's, I'm going to move, I'm going to make another, make a second motion that an app.
I don't think we've settled on your last motion and second.
We're good.
You can't, you can't make another motion. You haven't voted on the last.
Yeah, we have to vote. So you, you guys have a motion and a second. So all those in favor with one, you just said this would be aye.
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 Yeah. So then I'll make a motion that, sir, if you could just fill out the waiver variance application, just so we have it on record for the town. I think everyone's comfortable with what's in it. I just want to make sure the paperwork's right. So nothing ever comes back on this if someone does a record request.
And it is a waiver. It's not a waiver variance application. It's just a waiver application.
I didn't hear him.
Yes, if he could have a printout so we could fill it out before he leaves tonight.
Can you do that for you?
Okay, so I'll make a motion, if you would please, to fill out the waiver application. I don't know, do we really need a motion for that? No. I think we'll be good. So I think that's everything.
So what you just state, Chris, had both those motions carried?
Both motions have carried.
Thank you. Thanks, Dan, and she'll get that ready for you. Okay, up to, oh, Jay, sorry.
Be aware that even though there is a driveway there, before he commences work on the new driveway, he will have to get a driveway permit for $125 from the town.
Yep. The other question, and Jay, you know, I bet you know this answer too, and if you don't, I bet Lee does, that is a brutal.
Did, did you?
Yeah, gradient there. Does he have any special permits he's going to need for that?
No, he only need 50 feet.
No, it doesn't have to do with the set, the 50 feet.
No, you only need 50 feet at 2%. After that, you can drop or go up as higher, as steep as you want.
Yeah, so he's good there.
Right. Because he's, he's coming off at level land.
I just want to make sure that there wasn't something tricky in there that he needed to.
I mean, he's level at the top on the existing driveway. It's when you.
Yeah, I drove by there and looked at it.
And you do one of these. Okay, so you should be set. She's getting that printed. Do you want to just run and get that for him?
I can.
Okay, and then we'll go on to the next. The next thing we have on here is Artisan Farm Divine Homes. And both Lee and Nick have an update on this. It all happened today. So go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the town board. We have been working through the development agreement. We understand that the developer wants to move forward with pre-construction meeting and start to work on the, on the developments over the course of the last month or so. Developer has submitted its bid for public improvements, which we needed before we could draft the development agreement. And there were some final requirements that were identified by Lee in, in his most recent updated report reviewing the development. So at this point, you have both in your drive, and I've provided a hard copy for review, a development agreement between the town of St. Joseph and Divine LLC, which is the developer of this particular property. Approximately 35 acre parcel. 11 subdivision lots known as Artisan Farm. And the agreement spells out the responsibilities of the developer and the rights of, of the town as this process moves forward. Largely, everything remains subject to the approval of the town engineer and the town attorney as we work through some of the final obligations. All of the development obligations are contained, developer obligations are, are contained within section C on page two into page three. And then throughout the rest of the document, we have the road construction requirements, the driveway requirements, the development, repair and maintenance obligations, cleanup obligations, stormwater management. There will be restrictive covenants related to this particular development, likely a homeowners association. So that's all addressed in the agreement. And then the letter of credit, credit as a security for the public improvements, which we received a copy of from Citizen State Bank in, in Hudson today for the total amount of $289,985. And then just the rest of our, our general terms, which ultimately obligate the, the developer to pay all of the town's costs associated with working on this development, including engineering costs, legal fees, and any other costs incurred by the town as this development moves forward. With that, there are a number of exhibits that will need to be populated as we finalize the document. The legal description, insertion of the preliminary plat which you approved in September, the stormwater management and maintenance agreement, the restrictive covenants, the homeowners association documents, the construction schedule, the final plat, once it's approved, the letter of credit and the insurance certificates, which we received today from the, the developer. So all appears to be in order. At this time, we would recommend approval so that we can proceed to finalize with the exhibits, gain signatures and move this process forward with the developer.
It's been a while since we've had one of these, Nick. Is this something that they signed first and we signed last?
No, it can be signed or executed simultaneously, but it needs to be notarized because it will, it will be recorded against the property. So we need both signatures notarized before we can record. At the same time, you know, we'll wait to finalize restrictive covenants and some of the other documents to be attached here as part of the exhibit packet. So it won't be recorded right away. We'll wait for developer to finalize those documents and ultimately probably wait until a final plat is approved before we, before we record.
Anyone want to make a motion to approve this development agreement so this thing can move? Oh, you want one more thing, sorry.
Just one quick clarification. I don't know if anybody picked up on the fact that the developer wants to have a pre-construction meeting soon.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, obviously, we're in a, in the season where we don't typically do road construction. So that is not what the pre-con is about. It's about clearing and grubbing.
Okay.
So that's what they're planning on doing here more immediately. And then we would have a second, more detailed pre-construction meeting when it gets to the point where the road construction would occur.
Anyone?
Does that need to be in the motion or?
No, no.
Just a point of clarification.
Just the development agreement. If anyone wants to make an approval of that.
I make a motion to approve the developer's agreement for Artisan Farms slash Divine Homes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it passes. Okay. Update on road connections to the west side of town.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. We did provide a memo from Phil Carlson regarding that. And I thought he was going to be on Zoom meeting. I don't know if he is.
Oh, he is. There he is.
Yes. Hand it over to Phil. Phil through it.
Yeah, it only said iPhones. I didn't know who was there. Go ahead.
Yes, sorry about that. Yes, I am here. Madam Chair and Board, in November, we provided you with a preliminary analysis of the roadways around the interchange area. And we outlined what the process would be going forward to refine that and finalize that. And then in the short memo that I gave you for tonight, I just reiterated that, that we will discuss with WISDOT and the county transportation folks, just to make sure we know the standards and spacing and share that preliminary map with them. And then we'll want to engage with property owners along these highways on 35 and County Road E so that they are aware that the town is studying this. And I noted in the memo that we will be very careful how we communicate. Just say, the town is studying this, the town is not, does not have a grand plan of building a dozen new roads past your properties. It's all really very high level planning, but we want to be ready when development projects might push those road projects. And you know, there is one potentially in the works now in the southeast quadrant, and there may be others. But we would have a meeting, show people the map, invite their comments, make sure we understand the details on the ground. And then refine that, check in with the board again and have a second draft, second round to share with you about that. So we just want to move cautiously, but with good information from property owners and the potential developers or realtors who are working on these as well. Get that information together and then come back to the board. But we wanted you to be aware that we are going to start putting together that meeting and see if you had any comments, suggestions on that.
Anyone have any comments on this for him? Go ahead, Justin, if you turn your mic on.
Yeah, I, I would just want to think that as we plan out roads, we also want to make sure that we're accounting for all the utility needs in there as well, right? So electricity, anything that we might need to change. I don't necessarily love the idea of electric cars going huge, but we don't want to have a bunch of places come in that might need the higher electricity to pull power lines, anything like that. Obviously broadband is again another concern as we make sure we plan this out. So it may be just good to have that in our back pocket as well. Again, it's, this is preliminary, making sure the town is ahead of the ball. But still, we want to make sure we're also accountable to everyone who lives here already.
And because, and I would like to like, point out too, because humans love brand new roads for bikes and running on and all these other things that if this is going to be a connection that they're going to seek out to get someplace else desirable. I think that is worth keeping in mind that that's a possibility in our right of way too.
Good points.
I don't have anything else. Are you coming back in February or March?
I, I would say it would be March. It will take a little while just to put the logistics of a meeting together. We want to post some stuff online and then give people notice of the meeting. So you know, that in itself might take a month. Then we'd have the meeting, summarize what we found and come back to you. So let's assume it will be March.
Okay, everyone's comfortable with that? We'll move on. Thank you very much for dialing in on us.
Thank you.
Major road project, is there anything you need to update us on and where are we on the grant monies?
Madam Chair and members of the board, there are no real substantial updates on this project. We are working on the record planning of, of the improvements that were installed, which in particular are the stormwater facilities. And as such, as we are working on the stormwater facilities and there are costs involved, those would go against the grant.
Okay.
So we are trying to get to the point where we have really the, the final number so that we can finalize that grant and, and get the, the money back for the town.
So I'm just going to leave this on here and then you can just update us. There's no more pay requests on this except for next year, right?
Correct, the final, final.
The final, final. So I'm just making it clear on that, that we just have one more payment to them next year.
Like in 2025?
No, in 2024.
This year.
Spring.
Yeah.
This year later.
Later, later.
Punch list.
Yeah. I, I keep thinking I'm in 23.
I know.
I keep writing 24. Doesn't work. Yeah, so 20, we still owe them money, but not a ton of it. All right, on to, you wanted me to put on hand the 2024 road maintenance project. You wanted to speak to that.
Yes, I will. So the Public Works Committee has been discussing this year's road maintenance project, which includes typically crack sealing and seal coating of various roadways in the town. And at this time of the year, we always need to come to the town board and get authorization to actually start working on that project in earnest. And consistent with the pavement management plan and the estimated cost for engineering versus the budget of $480,000 that the town board has set aside for this project. The estimated engineering budget for the project is $40,000 with this, which is slightly less than the percentage estimated for those projects in the pavement management plan. So we are looking for authorization to commence work on the 2024 road maintenance project with the estimated engineering budget for $40,000.
Anyone have any questions for him on that? Otherwise, I should make a motion to approve that and get this started. When do you plan on coming forward to the board with a list and you know, when are you, where, where are you, are you thinking like April?
Perhaps, well, we would hope to be closer in March.
March?
I know the Public Works Committee wants to take a look at the roads again, you know, when we're a little closer to spring.
Okay.
We certainly try to get bids by April though, so it'll be in that March, April timeframe.
Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2024 road maintenance project not to exceed 40,000.
For the engineer.
For the engineer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it passes. And then talk to us about the soil boards. Do those get done this week or not?
Yes.
Oh, you know. Go ahead.
Yes, I understand that they were completed this week. We have not received any information back yet about them. So I would assume in the next couple of weeks that we will at least get a preliminary sense from the soils engineer. And we certainly can report back to the board at at that time.
Well, I'll bring it up in the February meeting then, if that works.
Sure.
Okay.
So with that, if the, if it's adequate, are you going to have a price for improvements or not at February?
If we can get the information soon enough, we, we could have a revised cost estimate. Again, it's a high level cost estimate.
Just looking forward to it or pushing it down the road?
Yeah, it would be nice, it would be nice to bring it in February if we can.
Okay.
So that's the goal if, if the geotech can meet that.
Perfect. Update on the tractor. I know that we're done with mowing. Has it been picked up? Was it in for maintenance?
We have an appointment for it and I have not been contacted yet.
Okay, so you're still waiting on that?
Yep.
Okay. Anyone have any questions on that? Right away, construction problems by the utility contractor. Um, right away, construction problems by the utility contractor. I had someone digging around out there about a month ago, but nothing happened. So that's all I can tell you. We'll be visiting that in the spring.
Yes.
They pull, are they pull, are they notifying us where they go or pulling? They must have some form of notifications.
Well, they have to take out a permit to pull cable through this town and we have their permit to pull cable. And they did that way back, but they tore out that retention pond. Yeah. So that's the problem. They tore it up and come spring, it's going to be a mess.
So this conversation should probably take place later as we see everything like along the west side of Forty First Street here. They
Yeah.
They really did a number on that.
Well, we need to let him know because he can add that to the list.
Sure, and that's, that's kind of why I'm saying is there's going to be more discussions coming up. So I wasn't impressed with their zero rehabilitation to that area.
Bad.
So.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Um, performance of the repairs on River Road. I don't know if any of you have driven River Road. We did pay for that to be fixed this last summer by our maintenance contractor. And it's, I took a bunch of pictures, I don't know, maybe two months ago. But there were a couple of areas where I wasn't comfortable stopping my truck and leaving it parked because of the hills. I didn't want to get picked off on the road. Anyway, there's places that it's actually failing. So I have informed Lee and I just wanted you to inform the board where we are on that.
Yes, so, um, Kelly went out and looked at that this week and for the most part, those areas are where they did spray patching.
Yeah.
Um, those are areas that the contractor recommended that that would be the appropriate fix. So we are in the process of contacting the contractor and putting them on notice about those areas.
Yes.
Which contractor was that?
Allied.
Allies.
So they fixed, um, Scott Road, if you've been over that, those look great. These, not so much. And they're popping out. And so I don't know if they did prep them well enough or what. I don't know what the problem is. But they started failing two months ago when I started, because I drive that road all the time to go to work. So I saw it and I let them know and said, we need to make sure that this gets taken care of because it's not even six months old. So that's what he's taking care of and just making you all aware.
And my habits have changed, so I'm, I'm not going down River Road all the time. So is that that, um, what I'm going to call, uh, south?
At the eastbound, it's the eastbound lane.
Farthest south one that where it was kind of going to roll.
In the easterly end.
And the worst of it is after Bobors. Right around Bobors and then further east of the worst, but there's a couple of this side of that too. So I'm just making you all aware that, you know, we're going to stay on top of it and get them to take care of that, hopefully. You know, because we just don't want that to get away from us. Um, new development clustering of mailboxes on cul-de-sacs. This is sent to us by Public Works. When you have a cul-de-sac and you have mailboxes going all the way around it with say five driveways or whatever, you end up having no place to put snow. And as they plow around it, the snow gets heavier and heavier as they go. Todd's not here tonight, so he can't speak to that, but that's the problem. And that's why we're having claims against us on cul-de-sacs where mailboxes are sprinkled around it. The Public Works wanted us to consider sending this to the Plan Commission to change chapter one forty-nine and not require the developer to have to put in the locked mailboxes, but just to cluster them together. So I find, I, I, I live near a cul-de-sac and two of the mailboxes are on the straightaway and one is not. And it gives the snowplow driver a large amount of area to plow snow to. Where when they're peppered around it, there isn't. And I'm sure you've had some discussion at Public Works, so I'll let you speak to that.
Yeah, so we've talked through it and came to the agreement that it's uh, makes sense and is beneficial to the homeowners back there. It's beneficial to the uh, potential homeowners. This is a um, thing that we want to apply to new developments coming in, not, nothing retroactive. Uh, wanna, I personally want to simplify for the trucks coming in there, the service trucks coming in there that you know, the, the boxes are either on the right when they come in or on the left when they come in. And we can clear off the street much faster and, uh, get out of there and get people on their way.
If everyone is comfortable with this, two things that have to happen. It has to go to the Plan Commission to change that ordinance. But then I think Public Works wanted you to come forward with some sort of plate that shows how this would look. Is that what I understand?
We can do that.
Okay, and like I said, we're talking about individual mailboxes, not necessarily the locked ones, the big silver ones. We're not talking about those. We're just talking about individual.
Yeah, so I guess we didn't want, we didn't want to spend a lot of money on it. I think he understands that we were picturing you coming into a cul-de-sac and they'd be on the left side because obviously you're entering into a non-traffic area. You could easily move over to the left. Get your belongings out of there and move on to your residence.
Yeah.
So it's only one forty-nine and wouldn't it affect one seventy or one sixty-eight?
No. No. Just one forty-nine.
And we, and we're picturing something like a four-foot bump out.
Yeah.
And the boxes on there. Okay.
So, um, I'll make a motion that we send this to the Plan Commission to look at chapter one forty-nine and put something in there that allows for the clustering of mailboxes on all new cul-de-sacs with a plate of some kind that will come from Stan Tech to accompany that. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, it passes. On to parks, unless there's anything else on Public Works. I think that's it. Parks. Update on the playground and plans to be completed in the spring. Do you want to come up to the microphone? Because I know you guys have a plan now of what you're going to be doing in the spring. I didn't see, I haven't seen, we asked for a copy of the minutes and haven't seen them, so I'm just asking you to speak. There you go. Now it's on.
So uh, we have almost finished the slide. We have put some of the rubber mats temporarily because it was frozen when we had planned to do that. Then, uh, it's all up a little bit, so we decided let's put the, the mats in there. So if the children are falling or so, there's some protection. But it has to be removed in the spring and placed properly. Also, they need to put in some plantings and some mulch and finish that up. And the rain on the stairs too.
Okay.
So that is, uh, fact on the, on the hillside.
Hmm.
There's still the pond, the dimension pond, which, uh, we had planned the rain garden. We had an estimate last year to do that. It was all the delays, nothing has happened. So we'll ask again an updated estimate to do that.
Okay.
We also need to, uh, uh, build the bridge over the overflow from the pond when the rain is because there's a little swell going down there. And maybe be grading, but whoever does that can do it. And we have to build a bridge over that so the children cannot go. Otherwise, then it will be finished and maybe we can celebrate.
That would be great.
Yeah.
We would love that.
Probably almost this year, four years.
I know, it's been a haul. Um, so I'm looking forward to getting done. Um, the next thing is our direct plan. It just came back, was it today?
Today.
It just came back today. So I believe it is ready for a public hearing or does public, uh, does Parks want to take another look at it? Well, you have to turn your mic on.
Here would be my question. We just got it at five oh three. Um, if we set it for a public hearing, what would be the reason why you would send it back to Parks? To take a second look at it with what expectation?
I don't have any expectation. I'm asking Parks whether they want it sent back to them or else we just go forward and do the public hearing. If we do the public hearing, there is zero changes being made on it. Because once we set the public hearing, the document is locked.
So can we kind of dispense with kind of the norm here and talk at about, uh, six D at the same time?
Well, that's interesting.
I think so too.
Because if you want to talk about D, have you taken a look at the comprehensive plan?
Ours are the one that I just sent you, that comprehensive plan? Yeah, as a matter of fact, would you like to see my folder on all this?
No, but I'm just saying that map is different than the map that is being used.
Oh, no, 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 no. It's way bigger than.
Uh.
Wait, 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 wait. So here's maps. And
So
here's maps.
Let's reel this in for a minute. What, uh, what's left for an outdoor rec plan?
I'm going to reel it back then even more for you. So when we talk about it, we can all have the same answer on the same topic.
Okay.
I really think we need to resolve what map is going to be in there and whether yeah, because I worked this afternoon that was presented to us in the drive as a single document. And we really need to make a decision on what is going to be the map. And we can go back many maps, many years from many different documents. And I, I think it's significant. We cannot go to it. I'm going to say that we're going to send it back to the Parks if that's the action that we take. This is not ready to go to a public hearing until the map issue is taken care of, if the map is going to be part of the plan.
Well, right now it's not. There's no map in this plan.
On this one.
No, there is none.
So that begs, that brings me to another question because I know it was discussed at length on the map. And where did we land on, on that?
I tried to get minutes, so I don't know where you landed at your last meeting.
And I was trying for minutes too.
So it seems like the map is
The hang.
Hot discussion, who's responsible for that?
They are.
Okay.
But the map is not part of this rec plan. Now, it could be, but it's not in here.
It kind of
Part of it.
Uh, maybe I'm managing this wrong.
Have to be. Go ahead.
So the direction that we received, which came in an email along with the red line, was that the bike and pet trail map was to be removed.
Yeah.
And this map, uh, that was part of
The tap grant.
The tap grant would be included. So that map is in there.
I can't find it. He's sitting here.
It's in the document.
Oh, it's in.
So am I out of line sitting here thinking of how we should manage this as one piece of it is an outdoor rec plan for Saint Joseph in the bike and pedestrian is a different business?
So here's what, here's what I'm going to pull out of my hat. Here's a Stan Tech notice from February sixteenth of twenty twenty-one. Remember regarding the preliminary scope for the town of Saint Joseph Comprehensive Outdoor Recreation Plan. Task one point three. And one point two, one point two is mapping. And one point. Uh, my glasses aren't lining up here. So I don't see any reason to have a hearing when we've got this unresolved issue on the map. And when I gather up my paper, I, all the paper and the documentation, I realize what you're, you just read on the last. Here's one, January eleventh, twenty twenty-two, ask three, mapping, Stan Tech led with town support. We will update the trails map per client feedback.
Right, but he's saying that he was told to take that map out and put this one in.
And I don't know where the maps are being pulled from or who is pulling them. And I think that
we were, can I say something? So we're looking at the last meeting at the map. We decided to remove the one existing because people, there were some, some, uh, bicycle trails which
Right.
So removing that, exactly that map, only removing those lines, that map, and that was the idea what we had at that time. If you guys want to change that, that's another issue.
The point.
But I think for the public to have a map, more or less when you look at it, where are the, the bike trails for the potential in the future bike, bike trails? That is using. There's a lot of.
Okay, there are so many versions of the map that are floating around. Number one, everybody has to work from the same version. Needs to be a determination made. This is the map. I don't care where it came from, who it came from.
What it was on, on the drive.
I know. But we need to.
Okay, I'm, I'm
That's where we're at.
Chase. First of all, I think you should look at the comprehensive plan and see if you can resolve your mapping issues between that and where you want to be. We are not changing the map for the impact fee side of it because the impact fees only include that one section. So it doesn't matter whatever else is on that map. So we're not changing the impact fee analysis for that reason. If you want a map included in this document, then you have to come back with a map. You're not coming back to change this. You're only, well, you told Stan Tech to only include the section for the tap grant.
That's the one we covered on the last version we chose on the drive.
Okay. Here's, I'm going to say this one more time again. I don't care. We're gonna, we're gonna go, as Chris says, we're going to use the comprehensive plan map.
I think that's your starting point.
Stop, please.
Starting.
So I can just stay on track. There are maps from all different sources in Google Drives and how they've been passed around. This, this has been going on for three years. So I think it's fair to say we're going to take the comprehensive plan map. I'm holding on to the map that I spent a gazillion hours on this afternoon, trying to figure out for the people that are asking about um, the blue, what they refer to as the blue line. And I think it's fair to say that that might be the one to start with because I printed it off the Google Drive from today. That's the map I started with. And then I identified all of these things. And I think that this map that is in the Google Drive right now, tonight, is the one that needs to be evaluated. Any changes made on it and that becomes the map.
Okay, okay. So what I'm going to do is I
But how that?
I'm going to make a motion.
But.
That the map is going to go back to the Parks Committee and you're going to come back with a map after you look at everything you have and the town plan. And that there will be no changes made to this outdoor rec plan. It will be on our agenda in February to set for a public hearing once you get the map done.
Second.
Any other discussion by anyone else on the board?
Yes, so. Well.
I need discussion too. But let him go ahead. I want to hear him.
So is there a version that is documented version?
Of just about your.
Twenty-three point eight that Stan Tech's working off of, that Nina's working off of, that she's working off of, that we don't have twenty-five maps that we're looking at that are on?
Well.
Is there a version?
On the mapping version, I don't know. I can't, I don't know. That the Parks Committee needs to figure out what version they want to work on.
Okay.
We're going to assign, there's, they're going to be assigned a version because there's not very many variations. We're arguing about one spot. So we just need, we just need one model and it says on here, six D bicycle trail map, January tenth, twenty twenty-four from today, which is what I, or not from today, from yesterday. And that's the one that I worked on and tried to reconcile between all these other versions of maps that have been printed out.
So we want to have a meeting next week so we can have a look at it.
It's not coming. What, that would be my next question. Parks can meet on their regular meeting and then we can and when Parks has this map, what do you want them to do with it after they've done?
They need to make a motion and sign off on whatever thing they're going to send back to this board.
For the map?
For the map only. This
Does the map?
Down.
I know, the map only.
Attachments.
Can that be taken care of in February along with the public hearing and because we're not going to change that document.
Right.
We're going to change the map as to be, uh, become a part of that document. So we only have action on the map.
On the map.
So everybody's on board with what we're doing with this?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Here's my only question. Is there enough?
Is there enough funding left? For STAN Tech? To add the map to this document right now? Because we made a very distinct final motion at the last board meeting, that this was it. The discussion is done. Now we're coming back to a new discussion, which I'm not in love with.
Madam Chair, members of the board. The amount of time it took to turn around what was asked of us last month was pretty minimal. So there is budget left in what was approved last month. So my only answer to your question is if. If we're handed a map and we have to just insert it in the documents, that of course will fit within the budget. What I don't know at this point is if, if and how many revisions to the map will be needed. It's, it's hard to imagine that there would be enough to put us over that budget. Um, so I think we're okay, just based on my gut feeling from what we're talking about tonight. So that's my best answer.
Okay, I, I will be very clear, I, I won't green light exceeding anything what we said at the last meeting, that's. I wanted this set for public hearing tonight, I was hoping it was done.
Well, I did too, but when I saw the agenda and what was going on in the map that came, was in the Google Drive, I knew right then and there that was not gonna happen. And this discussion is going exactly like I expected it to. I will put out one more little tiny thing here. That map. Needs to be someplace. And the outdoor recreation plan is the most likely one. If there's going to be any further discussion on a tap grant. That is gonna take you down Creasel Farm Road. Through the right away and connect to Somerset and when. If, if you're going to go back and go for it again for another tap grant and or Somerset comes back to us. You're gonna have to straighten out this very map that we're discussing here and now, right now, tonight. And you're gonna have to figure out how to get it. As a part of your outdoor recreation plan and at that time, if the state is being real fussy about it. They could probably make us amend our comprehensive plan to include the bike map in it at that time. So I'm just gonna put it out there. So that, so what that would mean.
Work on that, I will try to resolve all these issues and if we need an extra meeting between us. The park committee will do that, we have done before, so that can get out.
And I, and I don't, and to be, to, just to have a little shop talk between Nina and I. We're talking about this, the old railroad right away that's been discussed many, many times, that the light is clearly on there, we've already had this discussion. And it's a matter of X out and make this line go away. And I don't see. Yeah, we don't, I don't see mine, any other major discussion on it.
Okay.
All right.
There's a motion in a second.
Motion in a second is on the table, all those in favor say aye. Posed, it passes, you got your marching orders. You got your marching orders, you know what to do, thank you. Getting to go on, I think seven o'clock I'm in here about the complaint on the fence at the preserve. And I know that you're, they're over here and I know it's a little bit before seven, but we can start if you wanna come on up to the, um, table, please. And if you just wanna introduce yourself for everyone here. Right, and so we've been kinda going around and round and I asked you, you asked me, I said, I think you just need to come in and we need to discuss this. As you well know, we had a survey done on this property and there are stakes up out there as to where the actual line is. Um, so we are aware of where that is. Um, and so I guess, you know, I'm looking at your pictures that you. Um, submitted and I think we had them elsewhere too. What it, what is it that you are looking for from the town and we'll go from there.
Well, there's two items, um, first of all, this is. Uh, there were, there were two items that I contacted Laura about, one was. Regarding the fence that Walbrook put out to keep his livestock in.
Oh, yeah.
Through the course of the years, that barbed wire has been. My question was simply, does it all intend to maintain that fence line? Uh, partly because of the other issue I communicated to her, which is to stop trespassers from. The desert hundred percent of my property, fence lines in there, you know, the grid, signs on, shoot them. So there were two issues that I contacted. So, uh, first and foremost, the, the question is, does the town tend to maintain the fence? That Walbrook had on property, that's the first question.
Well, there is a fence law in this state, which means that you don't. Correct me if I'm wrong, Nick, as you face the fence, you're responsible for the right half of it. Not the whole thing. Between two properties, that's the fence law, but go ahead.
We invited you here this evening, I, I did, because I wanna be a good neighbor. And thi- this is why we're here together is I wanted to see where you're at. Now, my attorney can correct us if we're wrong here, but I'm. Educated on, we would share the cost of replacing a fence, period, okay? So my discussion tonight with you, sir, is if you would like it brought back to a barbed wire type. A chain link type, I have a fence installer. At my beck and call, he's aware of this situation. I also propose that we could go down there, if, if you were fine with it, we could remove all the. Fallen trees, all the debris, straighten it up. And bring it back up to speed because any fence installer is gonna want to work in a good environment.
Yeah, and, and it's pretty bad shape, a lot, a lot of things, and I should mention that. Um, two of my neighbors that are adjacent to the property, they're here as well. So, um, any conversation related to sharing costs, you know, we should probably talk about.
So, so this is a great discussion, I, I feel that. We can have some discussion here tonight on it, or if you want a different discussion, please contact the office, I, I'm just. Proposing that it's gonna take some small machines to get in there and straighten it all out. And then the fence contractor educated me on that. And then, you know, decide amongst yourselves if financially you can partner with us to replace that. And then what kind of fence do you wanna?
Well, I think not speaking for my neighbors, but maybe my thought here right now is let us have a discussion. Car is also adjacent there, they're, they don't have a home on the property, so follow them. Uh, let's have a conversation amongst people that are impacted by this, and then we'll get back to the, to the board. And let you know where our thoughts are.
Yep, so I feel that you could do it in a written form or come back and visit us.
Okay, so that, that's great, I appreciate that, I mean, that's, that's, um, very compromised, I think, because.
Well, it, I feel it's rude. For everyone to be encroaching on your property when it's your property, I do wanna. Display that there is property lines there and then. If, if it, you know, which this isn't part of it, but if it comes to each property and when it has to deal with trespassers. Now it's identified of where the property lines are, right?
Well, I think, I don't know, I think that's a separate issue. Yeah, trespassing, you know, in contact and share, we contacted the share abundance. You know, people trespass this year, in the past couple of years too, so. We're, um, going to the sheriff with that. But the other question I had, which was part two of this, Tracy and I probably also. The, I talked to the DNR about this whole grant about buying this property. And is there any ability of the township to have a control over the quantity that's occurring on this property? They said yes, you know, if there's a public safety issue, um, yes, um, you can absolutely do something about it. Plus, the other interesting thing is the, um, other parcel, the Perch Lake Park. They don't allow rifle hunting, it's only bow.
Right.
And the DNR said, you know, we have two adjacent hunting properties, they want to be the same.
So this is, this is the county down here.
They don't like two different types of hunting occurring on adjacent land, and they're, and it's like all controlled by the DNR, so. You know, Tracy and I talked about this, it's like we don't have any control, this is the brand. I have a very short conversation with the DNR, it's only, the township does have some control. And maybe they do have some influence over the type of hunting that's there, cause you know what, my house was shot. Several years ago, there's a. Bullet that came through my house and my kids. So I don't wanna see it, I have powered rifles, you know, a hundred feet from my property, but people don't. Be perfect, man, so it's, it's clearly they don't. Kids never shotguns, fumbling around. There's fence line there, the ribbon signs on, shooting signs, it's better, they're just, you know. Not responsible.
Can I ask you a quick question? Just for clarification. You're seeing on the screen there that lower forty of ours and this is you, correct? It says Murphy Family Trust, right? So then if I go up to the northern thirty-eight or thirty-seven acres, this person who adjoins it is Dorothy.
That's Dorothy.
Okay, so who else would have joined this? He's on this side? And we're only, right now, we, because you asked to speak to us, I was only talking about that. Your side of it, so he's on this other side, on the north or south?
East side.
I know, but you're the. Opposite. Up this one? No, that's it. Down, this is you, down one more. Okay, that one, all right, I just wanna know where everybody is.
So for educational purposes then, is we were. Here educating ourselves with Mr. Murphy, so what? Concerns do you have, Chad, what's going on in your property?
You have to come up to the mic, I'm sorry. You both, someone has to, has to be on the mic.
As far as our property is concerned, I mean, we've had the same trespassing issues, um, several different times coming. I own it myself, so I have several trail cameras over there. And it's like obvious where people come from. When they cross, and, and our fence on our side, our side of, or our side property are. In good shape, I mean, there's good. Four stranded bar swears all along that property.
So I wanna stop you for one second, educate the board on where the people are coming from.
Uh, they're coming from this public land. I mean, they're, they're jumping the fence, I've had parts of my fence being cut. So they could easily pass through it, um. I mean. Right now, so our property is that, um. Is that southern or that piece there?
This piece here and this one above it.
And then there's another fifteen that actually goes, so our driveway goes all the way up. That one right there, so as you can see.
So you have the whole side.
The whole side, yes.
Gotcha.
So the whole east fence on our two forties belongs to you? So you're the one property owner.
So he's one property owner on that side. And she and him are on the other side.
So we actually go right to Perch Lake Park.
This, this part here, you're right down to the park.
Yep, exactly.
Because this forty here belongs to them and this. Okay, so you're telling us that on your side of the property, the fence is in relatively good shape. In order to prevent people from cutting fence or climbing, that's a little difficult to do, obviously. You know, cause you can't regulate good behavior.
I understand that, I mean, I'm just, but I mean, one of our other issues has been, like, there's been. I think I, I, I don't know who I talked to up here, um, when I called in, but. There was one instance where there was a couple of kids over there just using the land as like a shooting range. And, yeah, I mean.
And that's not allowed.
Right, but I mean, is there signage even at, at the parking lot or anything that says, you know, hey, you can't?
We'll have to send that on to the parks also, I, it's interesting what you said about the DNR and I do think that's a discussion the town should be having. Because I think a lot of these problems stop when you take a gun season out rather than a bow season, I just. I, having been in a family of hunters, having been in a family of hunters, I find bow hunters to have a little bit different mentality than gun hunters do.
Well, sorry, I, I laugh, but this, this year again, um, I was on. By, in my pole barn, which is, you guys know my property is kinda way down the center of my property. And my wife was on there doing some work and I just happened to come down there and a bow hunter came strolling up. Walked right into pole barn, and we're in there, and said, oh, could you tell me where Perch Lake is? It's like, okay, well, it's over there, buddy, so.
And there is a map at our entrance and there's a map on the Perch Lake side too.
So he got personally turned around?
Yeah, yeah, but then the thing is he came back three days later, said he was. You know, he was on property, he said he was looking for the fury shot, you know, that day that he was there, it's like three days later. So yeah, you know, guys, I'm just giving you like recent examples, this happens all the time.
I, so I guess extending our conversation a little bit. You guys are living there. If, if we sat and discussed at some point removing. Gun hunting, okay, then what's the next piece? That you're, that you're thinking would help you guys as landowners there, okay? Be, because the rest of us here are, I'm gonna be point blank, I'm struggling how I should help you. Or listen to you and apply what we can do as the board here for you, right? So, well, I mean, one, I already exposed that I wanna be a good neighbor, I wanna fix the fences. If he needs fences fixed, I wanna deal with this stuff. Go ahead.
She has to push the button on the top. Right there, thank you.
I, I need to, I need to hear from you guys because what I think ain't gonna.
Yeah, and if you want to introduce yourself, so it's on that.
Um, my suggestion, I don't, a fence, great, but like you said, fences, fences fall down, fences get cut. I mean, we've put up, to be honest, an excessive amount of no trespassing signs, property line signs to mark. The open area, because when you come down to the bottom of the preserve there, that's, we actually have, there's a big. We, we're a ton of buckwheats from there and it's open, so people are coming down there and they think they can move over because the, the fence is down. We've put up excessive no trespassing signs, um, some of them have been shot. Um, people have walked through it, people on trail cameras from, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, they walked into the field and started pulling up. Turnips, stuck them in their backpacks, strolled around, walked away, we called the sheriff, we have photos of these people, but. I mean, the sheriff's office, they have more important things to do. You're not gonna find these people, they're not hurting criminals, they're running records, I mean, let's face it, I would like to suggest. The trail on the property line. We're encouraging people to be on our property lines. Where, you know, that's what's mode, we've had hunters put up their tents. Right in the corner, right on our property line, and my husband's hunting, has one of his hunting chests. Right behind the guy, I walked up to him a couple of years ago. Realize someone behind you? So, uh, my idea is to not mow the property line, but we let people to be a little bit curdrow. I, I mean, I know that it probably takes a little more effort, I don't think you can come up with any trails and mowers, but. You know, people wouldn't be let to act if they gotta walk through sixteen. Um, I, I mean, I know that it probably takes a little more effort, I don't think you can come up with any trails and mowers, but, you know, people wouldn't be let apt if they gotta walk through sixteen.
Yeah.
And it's the same on our side, I mean, it's right down the side of the fence line.
Yep.
All the.
Yeah, nobody's snowshoeing in the park, in the preserve, it's wonderful, it's, you know, the snowshoe, and, but the trails are, oh, they're pretty.
You're the first person to have said that, so that's interesting information.
So, and I have.
Go ahead.
I have a question.
Get onto your mic though, if you're gonna talk.
So I have a question I'm gonna ask each of you, because. So I keep the property straightened out. Your Chad. And I don't, I don't remember, your property's not clearly cleanly mowed right up to the fence, is it? Yours is not. So there's a, cuz.
I mean, there are areas like along the driveway where.
No, yeah, I, yeah, I, but. When I was out there, it didn't seem to me like it would be an easy transition to go from the preserve to your, where your driveway kinda is.
For the most part.
Okay. Mr. Murphy, is yours pretty clean or, um, right up to?
Trail's pretty close to the park. Yeah.
And is your, and, and is your, do you like your property clean up to the fence?
Uh, it is now, I just had a lot of balls done.
I ask because I keep mine clean up to my neighbor's fence, that's why I ask, and Dorothy, what about you?
Um, it's probably a mix, there's one area that we've done a lot of. There's kind of open field, and that's all we got.
And be, and then. And that seems, to me, it seems appropriate for. The area that you, I can see why both of you are doing, like, doing it, so that comes to the next question. Moving our, moving our trail. Further to the east, you, so your suggestion is move our trail further to the east?
Yeah, move it away from.
Well, just in, in.
Mr. Murphy, Bill, do you agree?
Yeah, I mean, I think that would help, give a natural barrier, it's not even right up against it, but I think that would, that would help.
I mean, you don't see our houses from when they're walking the trail, you don't really see the houses, you're, I mean, probably more so tents than ours than. Those of mine on our side, I mean, there's a lot of woods between. Our houses on our side, and. So I mean, they're still, they're still on the preserve, they, they really want, no, I mean, if I'm going to hike, am I looking up the, you know, am I pulling up the map to see what property lines are and trying to?
I guess I'd have to walk it now without, without any snow, cuz I didn't remember, I didn't recall those west trails being close to your property lines.
On.
That's why we had it, that's why we had it surveyed to know where the edge of it was.
Maybe Nina can, Nina's worked on the trails.
Nina, what did you wanna say you had to come to a mic?
I have another suggestion, too, if you wanna take suggestions, I mean, probably. Property line markers, like virtually part, backside of ours, there are property markers that state, you know. This is part of the property line, all the way down the backside of our property.
Alright.
I think that we've just had some discussion.
Definitely, that this is public land versus.
Do you think that they're effective? Do you think those are effective?
I mean, I think so, because I've had limited. I've had limited people ever come from, from Perch Lake Park.
So you're saying on your property, that's because county has done that, y- you're having minimal intrusion compared to what.
Yes.
Deppys and Murphys are having.
I think that's probably one answer, I think it's probably what. Actions multiple we take to reduce the issues that probably have, I think all the stuff we're talking about is really good. Chris, you guys.
So, I'll share with you, when I first heard of this, and I'm, I still operate like this. I'm an aggressive individual on the fact of, I want the stuff. Done correctly for you, to represent you, and to say to the people who are confused. With getting on your property, so my discussion with the fence installer was. Four foot chain link or six foot chain link is what I wanted.
Or barbed wire.
Along the whole length of it, because barbed wire you can cut, chain link you'll be camped out there. So. That, that's me, you can answer tonight or some other. Time if you feel that's too aggressive, or that's perfect.
Well, as I mentioned earlier, I think, let us talk about it, um.
Yeah.
Hey, and let's, again, let's be clear, there's two issues here, one's the fence line, so we'll talk about that back and forth.
Yeah.
Um, second is what are some of the options around, you know, the hunting?
In the proper.
We're, we're gonna handle that too.
Shotgun, high powered rifle versus bow, I think if we got rid of a high powered rifle, that'd be a good thing, right?
Having this discussion with you, and you educating us that, that we should be looking at. Our options for that piece of property, we, we will be doing that, uh, through the.
DNR, we'll have to talk to the DNR.
Through the DNR, but I mean that steers or, how do we acquire that? What's the term?
We use Knowles Nelson.
Knowles Nelson.
Grant money, which says we have to allow hunting.
Sure.
But now, his discussion with the DNR is that we may be able to restrict what kind of hunting is on.
So we need.
Public safety issue, there's lots of qualifications that run down the list, and you need that material.
I think Anton's got a quick input here, cuz he's been online, say it quick.
You wanna just hand him the mic, I saw that handle. So people can hear them.
Just call, just call.
There we go.
I was just looking up the, no, uh, Knowles stewardship, so it says, DNR may allow prohibited admission of one or more of the activities, including hunting. If a natural resource or determines it's necessary.
Yeah.
And I would say that's a forty acre, I was measuring distances. Unless you're in the very middle of that, any shot that you take that misses an animal is going to go onto the land.
Landowner's property. I wanna come back to you, cuz I have this up here right now. So this is your south prop, or no? East property line, right? I get, this is one place in this town, I can't get my directions right. So anyway, whatever at the bottom. That's where you're saying you have posts on that line from the county that state where it's public and private.
Correct.
That's what you're saying.
Yep.
And you're saying that you have very few people who enter to you.
Yes.
From that direction.
Personally, also has.
Speak up.
Oh, geez.
Difference from what you're saying, Chris, about chain link, they have a, a very heavy woven wire. That orders that whole property.
That's woven wire.
Which is better than barbed wire, cuz you can't get through it.
Yeah.
You literally would have to climb over it or cut it, and it's, I mean.
Well, that's why.
Chain link you can't cut, but this is a much cheaper version of that woven.
Is that like that cattle stuff that she kinda likes this?
I wanna say it's like.
What, what is it?
Six inch square wood, or something.
Oh, my goodness.
I would call something like that.
Great.
I'm sorry, guys, someone is on here that's not muted, go ahead. I muted him.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Nina.
Well, you, uh, you were discussing that, uh, the, the, the trails are very close to your property line from here. I want to walk the trail very created. And the reason we went there is because when you're walking, there's areas where you can walk and areas where it's just deep, no inside, so. We went and followed the tier's trail, the tier paths. That's the reason that the, the trail is there. Some places we can still move it a little bit where we can, it's just moving, and help you out with that. But other places, it's, we cannot really move them very much, uh, on the other side of your property. There's a lot of brush and so on, so they. I think, I remember, because I got lost one time when it wasn't created, and I had to step over your property to come back in there. So, yeah.
There's not, actually, there's not a lot of. There's not a lot of, actually, that was one of the fields next to me that. That they used to cut beans and corn in, I mean, it was open until.
Right here.
Stayed over, but.
Oh, yeah.
You're probably thinking of, you're probably thinking of my.
Our side, right on, those property, there's an. Come on, from the pond up, that kinda snakes through the trees, so, it's really pretty annoying to her. But that is right on the property line, and I can understand, yeah, there's no way to get anyone from the pond up on that, because there's another lane, so that.
Yes.
But there's, there are signs in there.
Yeah.
And if you're gonna get through there, through the woods, get on those property, you're on.
That's scary.
Can I? Can I ask if we, if we just move this to the parks?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna get there, just a second.
Just, I'm.
I'm gonna, just, since we have a. One quick.
And, you know, I communicated, I talked to Matt, Matt would actually said he was fun, talked to the DNR. So they have done some research and done something already.
Well, but it still had to come from the town. So.
Maybe go into Karen Bob's.
Really?
Oh.
Whoever is online, could you please mute your mics? You're picking up your background noise from your home.
Yeah, that's Janet. Um, we will have someone from this board contact the DNR directly. Um, I think that's the first role of action, I think the second thing is. We do need to check on the signage in that parking lot and see what it says about hunting, so we're sure about that before we change it. Number two, I think we have Chris, talk to a fence guy, come back with some quotes as to what it would take to. Replace this whole side of this fencing, while you all discuss it too. So that we come back with some information, cuz I think we're all talking about a lot of stuff, but no info. And we'll get some prices on these markers, we'll have the park committee get out a picture of those for us. So we can get some cost estimates from our sign company and see what cost to install them. I'm gone again.
I'd really rather spend money on, on storing removal or something else on my property than to be on.
We need to find any price.
Just relax, everybody, this was the start of the discussion.
Yep.
For everyone.
So we're just gonna get some cost estimates. And I will put it on the next town board agenda. For us to come back with all this information. That that works for everybody. Alright, let's do that.
Can I just, as long as we're all here and talking about it, I just wanna bring up another thing. About. A year ago, and I'm just, for your guys' information, a year ago. It was. Days, like, like a day or two before Thanksgiving. I had to walk out of my house. Go to the fence line. There was a family of, there, there was like a mom, a dad, three kids. All wearing black and brown jackets, wandering, I mean, is there signage over there that even says that it's open hunting as well?
Yes, and it has to wear orange.
That's where.
It is a.
It's a big sign that says you have to wear orange.
It is.
Yeah.
Maybe, no, I, 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 cuz they had no idea.
You have to come up, yes.
I, and I think we have another one on this.
No, because they also have hunting. So I presume they have it at their entrance, just like we have it at our entrance. Okay.
Can you recall in your lot that it says hunting allowed? That's all, that's all.
No, no, there's a hunting sign that says you have to be wearing orange during hunting season, because the first year it was open, someone almost got shot out there. Because she was wandering around when someone was hunting, and they, they drew down on her and realized it was not a deer. No, no, almost. He drew down on her, and then he got out, he went and confronted her, and she was like, I don't know anything about hunting. And I'm like, well, so that's what forces to put the signs in the parking lot.
And there's a, the, there's one on the website too, I think.
Right, it's on both, so it's, it's definitely.
That doesn't mean it does.
Well, the only other thing too, is, um, it's worth mentioning. Ninety-nine percent of people in our, on my property are in that lot, are from Minnesota.
Right, and that's a problem. Exactly.
So if it's not right there in front of them, when they drive in that parking lot.
Right now.
Do or don't do this, here's the rules, here's the rules, you're gonna do whatever you want.
And if they're walking in from the other end, we don't know which part they're coming in, so we could have a sign on that whole southern line.
I know.
They could told, we could have it on right between us and county, and they'll still miss it.
Well, you know, as, as I've been told, is that you can't legislate good behavior, and it's why people blow stop signs. It's why people have head-on collisions, cuz they don't pay attention. So.
I think the research on. Possibly being.
I think that makes a big difference.
Yeah.
So, we will do that, definitely, so that's our plan, is to come back next month. Thank you all for coming, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay.
So before we move on, who's the point person and who's gonna do this work, and they seem to be talking to everybody on the board?
Well, who wants to take this on? I mean, I'm willing to call the DNR, but. I mean, who wants to, I've asked Chris to get some pricing, he said he'd take care of that. And I've asked the park committee.
I look at it as it's a collaborative effort, it's a pretty big deal, so, I look at. If, you know, be, because you're the chair, I feel you have more ability to talk to DNR. I feel you should talk to them, because you know the Knowles.
Nelson Grant, yeah.
Grant, you, you know the people to contact. And I look at it as, as it's a workshop, because we all need to share it. And, and to be point blank honest, I am kind of. Fabby on, you're talking to them, Matt's talking to them, we're emailing, come on.
I was gonna say, and I didn't have any idea any conversations were going on with everyone else.
Well, well, and we're all discovering it's at the workshop, right?
Right now, and I'm like, who all's meddling in this?
Well, who's being contacted, and that's what happens when we're not.
Well, if I remember.
We can't be all on the email together, cuz it's a walking forum.
No, that isn't the problem, I was. I, I was told to contact Mr. Murphy, which I did, only to find out that some other people were responding to an email before.
Oh, wow.
If, within the five hours before I ever had a chance, and when I respond, I respond to everyone and put it's an FYI, so that you know what the question has been answered. What I said and who I said it to. And that I am not seeing from other parties, so I have no way of knowing what anyone else is doing.
So.
But I'm a little crabby about it too, cuz I wanna know. I have, I understand what they have just said me, to me, perfectly clear. I understand that Chris has got the resources to get the fence pricing. Where do you wanna go with this, and who the age is it gonna be talking to, who and gonna run with?
Well, I'm gonna do the DNR, and I'm hoping that you and the park committee get us some photos of those signs. That are between the preserve and the Homestead Park.
Well, then that's a fair task.
There, there, it's relatively simple, I can save everybody the trip, they're four by four yellow composite.
They're simple, yeah.
What do they say?
Pictures someplace.
Do they say it on both sides or one side?
On both sides.
Both sides.
The, they, they use them in quite a few places when encroachments are something you'd stumble across on roads everywhere. And you can do it for a fence line, so.
Do you know what they say?
I'm trying to get into the photos, we've got, I, we have photos of them.
Hi, this is Janet.
Okay.
Um, are you talking about the signs that are on his property?
We're talking about the signs on the southern.
St. Creek counties.
St. Creek. Sorry, St. Creek County Homestead Park signs. That delineate between us and them, or the homeowners and them.
That's across the.
Oh, the homeowners, have you seen any on the homeowners?
The homeowners have it on our property.
Yeah, the, the homeowners, Mr. Murphy has it, that, we, I think you have those pictures.
That's not what we're talking about, we're talking about. Um, uh, my directions are so bad, as you're facing.
The south.
Value on the south side. That property owner has signs on the south side of his property up against the Homestead Park. That Homestead Park installed.
Yeah.
That prevent people from entering from Homestead Park into his property.
Correct.
Yeah.
Those are the signs they're talking about.
Okay, yep, no, I'm not sure on those. I've not seen those.
So. I, I think it's pretty simple to pull this together, so. The composite posts. You know, the next time we meet with them. It, it kinda sounds like a mixed decision there, but the composite posts, I would think would be a great. Alternative.
Yeah.
All the way down that western edge between him and the other.
Yeah.
Lady that owned it, and we can determine. How many feet apart they are, if they're both in agreements to it, and. Uh.
And I'm fine with that, I just wanna know what the signs.
Install them, because he simply has the stuff, right?
I just don't, I just wanna know what they say.
I'll get, I'll get that.
What St. Creek, here's one that St. Creek has, that says right on it, all hunters register, must register at the park entrance, and it's a. It's a yellow flippy thing.
So.
But do you think that's on this property line?
There.
Can I just read aloud what Homestead Park says?
What?
Okay.
Cuz here's the other signs.
For St. Creek County's documentation on this park, it says, private land trespassing enclosed areas. Respect private lands, do not trespass on neighboring lands, all hunters are responsible for knowing the park boundaries. All obtain permission from respective landowners before entering or crossing private property. Hunting violations, trespassing, damage to private property, buildings, land, facilities, et cetera. Are grounds for cancellation of all future hunting privileges from at S C C parks. If a wounded animal enters the area, St. Creek County Parks is closed for hunting, please contact park office and so on and so forth. But they also state in here what's required for wearing an orange and they just, they tell you down to the all ground blinds must have a minimum of a hundred and forty-four square inches of solid blaze orange and or fluorescent pink by visibility for all directions. That's for all clothing and.
So that's on their website or that's on their sign?
This is on their website.
Right.
And then this is also posted at the
Entrance.
At the entrance.
So we'll just, I guess the parks committee is going to have to come up with some better signage to begin with.
It is right there that they can hunt on it.
Right, but I'm looking for the sign that he has on his property.
Yeah, Chad's.
And here's the one, the, these yellow ones are the ones that.
Oh.
So if you want to make.
I just need to know what they say. So I can get a quote.
Discussion and we're going to take brand new pictures that'll have it dated and. And.
That's fine. We just need to know what they say so I can get a quote on them before the next meeting.
Oh, that's what you're trying to.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to spin out. If you want to, we want some numbers. Right, but I need someone to go down there and do that.
I'm going to physically look at what's there.
Well, somebody.
That's how we're gonna do.
Yeah.
Well, they were still outside. I asked them to send me a picture of the sign that's on his end of his property.
Okay, on both sides. Yep.
There.
Yeah, because then I can get some quotes. I can get some cost estimates from the sign company and then we'll know where we're at. All right.
Next.
Next. Ah, good Lord. I'm to the. No, we already did that.
We already been there, done that.
We're not, God, West America over there. Okay, we're going on to the town hall building. You received a new set of plans, correct? You want to come over to the table? We received a new set of plans from Bruce tonight. Oh my goodness, can you give me yours? Because I don't know where they're mine. I think he's stuck here somewhere. What did you want to tell us about this, Bruce, quick? And not quick, but tell us where we're at here.
Nothing too much, uh, just a expanded set of plans, uh, started sections, uh, updated the elevations to remove the song ways. So from the east, south and west walls, uh, for our last discussion. And started some of the enlarged plans, interior arrangements, um, sort of the schedules. We've got some schedules with elevations of all those and started to reflect change then. Just providing an update on made progress. And, uh, for our last discussion, we'll be back next Thursday at six with my husband, Michael, engineer. Uh, to discuss our data, uh, and light issues.
Yes.
For the entire, so.
So can I bring up something? Because it occurred to me and I'm sorry that I'm a little late to this game. But if you remember when we bid out the town of Hudson, we were going to bid them with windows that opened. And then we ended up taking windows that did not open for a couple of reasons. I know part of it was supply chain. And part of it was costs. Is there any way to, um, put into this bid process? Or as an alternative to do a four panel rather than the two in the big center? And do them all closed or have them able to open it? I mean, can we do that? Because I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about supply chain, obviously, and that was a big deal. Even though that was, you know, over a year ago. So if we put these same windows in and we do them four panels just for the look and then do them, what do you call it? All fixed. Thank you. Or do them with two that open. I don't care, but I'm just saying that might save us some money and might help us on the supply chain side.
Yes, we can certainly, yeah, I can certainly set it up as based in their all fixed.
Yeah.
And then we can look at doing the, uh, case.
Shoes, yeah.
As an ultimate.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not, that's not an issue.
Because that was a big deal. Between the windows and the doors were big supply chain issues for us.
I have.
Go ahead. Anyone else?
One question on this drawing. So I'm looking at the, um, restrooms area, hallway one eleven. And I know we had talked about putting that door between the, the, basically the kitchenette area. But to me, that location seems kind of a moot point if the kitchen is open on both ends.
The kitchen isn't. It has, it has pocket doors on both ends.
It'll be pocket doors so you don't have to deal with swings.
Okay.
And the pocket doors will be, will be lockable.
Okay.
To keep, so if there's something going on in the town hall space that you don't want people in the kitchen doors between town hall and the kitchen to be locked. If you have any event going on in the town hall space and you want people to be able to access the kitchen, then the door to hallway one four can be locked. In order to contain, contain people within the town halls.
Sure. So here's where I'm looking then is if I'm looking at this being a controlled space and there's an event in the town hall. Um, for people to be able to access the restrooms internally, we would have to leave that door open, which would leave our entire office and hallway open.
Yep, and thus part of the conversation has been any activity that's going on in the town hall space is not going to be on the timeframe or being accessed in the restroom inside necessarily.
Okay. Yeah, the, the reason I was looking at is because I don't think the ones that are external are handy, uh, accessible.
Yes, they are.
Oh, they are?
Yep, both of them are.
They have to be.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know that they were so concerned with that hallway because the office will be alarmed. So everything else will be locked. So there's really no place for anyone to go. Because the doors on the mechanicals will automatically lock. You're going to have to have a key to get in and out of there.
Yeah, what I was just looking at is we're going to have those two drinking fountains plus the restrooms and basically they're going to be inaccessible, but the, do you know what I mean by that?
Well, the reason we put that, that door on there was primarily for election purposes. So everyone coming in for elections is going to end up using the exterior bathrooms for those elections rather than the interior ones so that we can control what's going on there with ballots and envelopes, et cetera. Right, because they're going to go out that door and leave that direction so they can go right past those exterior restrooms.
Okay.
Yeah, one eleven, they can go do the L, but they'll stop over by W nine and then they'd have to come back, right? Because they can go once they're in one eleven.
Right, but they want to be able to close that door for elections.
Which door?
Right there at one eleven. They're going to close that door into the main hall, into the main hall. So that people that are coming in for elections are not wandering in the building with election documents or or anything in their hand. They have to maintain their way through the line and voting. And they will exit there at that door next to the exterior bathrooms. And if they need to use the restroom, those are available to them.
Oh, got it.
Basically, we can make the one building into two.
Yes, for the election purposes, that's really what you want to do.
Yep.
Because you want to lock them out of the rest of the building because you don't want people wandering with.
It makes total sense. That's fine. And they educate themselves that they pass bathrooms on the way in.
Yeah. There you go. So we can take a look at this and get our heads around all this before next Thursday. Um, Thursday. Anything else you want to present to us? Um, you and I talked a little bit about a couple of things, so I do want to share. Okay.
For the exit door of the, of the office going out the west wall. And for the door coming out of the town hall space going up east door. I'm currently planning on both of those having an exit device. So push bar to exit, no hardware on the exterior. No. So once you leave, the door closes.
That's it.
Yeah, that's, that's normal.
And, and, and again, mainly to minimize the amount of access points where people could potentially try to break in by picking a lock or something. So.
So which doors are those, Bruce? The west one?
I think it's one.
The west door, um.
By the. Yep.
So one oh three dash two?
The east door, yes.
The south of the bathrooms.
Those two.
Those two doors will have no hardware.
That was, that was one of my questions I actually had for you was on that entrance hardware. And the other, um, but this is kind of a fire. We probably have enough. Do we have enough doors for fire Xs in this big building? Does the fire department need to?
Yes.
Take a, you already fired it, you already looked at it, Zach?
Yeah.
We, we need to provide two means of ingress from the town hall space. Now, the, it would be nice if the door coming out, the exterior wall was a little further down the wall. So it would probably be too half the diagonal.
Which, which, the west one?
So.
The east one, the east one.
You know, when the.
Oh, your east one.
They, they'd really like this door and this door to be as far apart as possible. So that in the event of an emergency, you've got two ways to get out.
Better and close together.
The opportunity is to be as far away from whatever's going on on one side or the other.
But.
Believe what we've got is still okay.
Okay.
I don't think there's going to be an issue with the way it's laid out and, and the main reason that this is laid out and one majority of the people are going to be in this space is open.
Right.
And this door is, is here for creating a slow for people when they come through.
Yes.
There will be spreader. And the distance for. And you can spread later, but you can actually, you can be further away.
Oh, good. Yeah.
Did we bump out the south side there or was that bumped out before?
That was bumped out before. It's been on the last couple of plans.
Yeah.
Also said, just so you're aware, this is also at the town of Hudson, their back door. Um, closest to the, um, park area is a door with no a- access. It only bumps out. And it works great for elections because even in cold months, people just push the push bar and out they go right onto the sidewalk and away they go. And people can't get back in that way to disrupt the election process since the door locks right behind them.
Since you're bringing up the town of Hudson, what is the sidewall of? What's the sidewall height on the town of Hudson's building from the to the bottom of the eaves? It doesn't appear to be twelve foot to me.
Oh, no.
It's what?
Ten eight.
Yeah. Yeah.
And maybe that was because it's only offices that were done, so we don't need the ten feet of ceiling height that we do in the town halls.
Um, one other question. Did you have any thoughts from, um, you know, I can give you my point of reference here. What's, are we going to have any window trim around the outside windows other than what the windows come with? Is it just going to be that narrow molyon or are we going to put like one by six boards around it or one by six something?
Yeah, I wasn't planning on doing that now that we're going with the metal siding, which is be the J channel trim that comes with the siding.
Yeah, so kind of an interesting observation that I made and I took quite a few pictures is if you're familiar with it, some of you will be. Teresa, I don't know how many of you are, are familiar with Prairie View Covenant Church and it's on, is that sixty-four coming out of Amory?
Oh, yeah.
Ironically, I think that that building is going to be a, I think their sidewalls are shorter, but I think proportion wise and footprint wise kind of ceiling. I could see where our building, if you took off their steeple. I think our building is going to look very, and if you can imagine the higher sidewalls, our building is going to look very, very similar to what that building is. And I just thought that that building from a visual standpoint, other than it's a big building and ours is going to be a big building too, I thought that it was very pleasing looking building sitting in the middle of an open prairie. And that's, so that's why Aston, they had that one by six trim and then they had a twelve inch um, big white board around the bottom, but we're going to have your, um, brick or whatever you call that on the bottom. So we wouldn't have that. And their entrance was fabulous, the way that was trimmed out. Um, I thought, and they had black, black frame windows inside that trim.
Well, you can send those pictures on to the Terry. She can disperse them.
Yeah, I can do that. I just was gonna, I didn't want to just send them randomly, but I.
Well, you can, you can send them. We'll take a look before next.
I think there's a night, it's a nice visual. The other thing is, is I, is um, I went online on a, a metal siding business and you could load pictures into it and then you could put your different colors on there for different um, different, a different look to see what the different colors are going to look with. You have a company that has the company, there's a company you're going to, that this would be, are your specs going to tell them where to buy the siding is my question?
We should specify several manufacturers.
Okay, and is several free or two or?
Uh, definitely three.
So I had, I had precision metal and metal sales and, but I don't know who makes metal sales. I think they have more than one brand. But anyway, it was a very good toolie that it was very user friendly to use. You put in, so I put in sixty by a hundred and twelve and um, it was interesting to put the different details in to see what it looked like. And I was wondering if you had that. If we could go to that tool.
But we're not picking out colors at this point.
You don't have to pick up colors.
Just making sure.
I'm not picking out colors. I'm just telling you, I was trying to get some visual of what this. It, I have a pretty good idea what it's going to look like. And that's why I said when I saw the Prairie View Church, it was like, wow, that's what our building is going to look like. And then I went on the, the metal sales one because I wanted some visual on what that that roof, a hundred and twelve foot long by as wide as our building is, what that roof was going to look like when we drive up from the other roads.
Okay.
So for January eighteenth meeting, that's where we're going to be talking about electrical. We'll be talking about what else?
Basically, it's power, data and lens.
Yep.
Sprinkler.
Can I ask one more question of you quick? Um, as far as our phone system goes, we're responsible for that, I presume? Except for the data lines that need to be servicing it. So can I ask you, Justin, to figure out what it's going to take to get phones in this place?
Mm-hmm.
As far as, are we taking what we have? Are we leaving them here for the fire department? And are we going to have enough to service those desks that are in there? So
Sure.
We're probably looking at five phones minimum and maybe one for the conference room.
And I think we still use Lothrum for that. No, we use.
We use Lothrum. You're right. So if you want to take that project on for us, I'd appreciate it because I think that's something I want to work into the cost estimate here. So we're sure we have everything. And it just occurred to me, we didn't.
Yeah, so, so for the eighteenth meeting, what I'm going to do is I'll take the adjustments on this. Um, put the heat map together that I've done. So I've got the Wi-Fi heat map. And then what I've done is I've, I've mapped out where the data drops will be for the desks as they're designed. And I put two drops just per one from computer, one for phone. Because I don't like daisy chaining the phone and the computers together. Um, and then the one question I had for this was as I'm looking at the town hall space for the smaller squares, those are just for electrical or was the assumption that one would have, there'd be like one drop in each?
Um, yeah, the, the floor boxes.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, those are intended, all of those would be power and data.
Okay.
And there's three in the office too.
Yep.
Okay, just making sure you saw that.
Yeah, I think the ones for the copier and then two for the working station.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. The two there are for the desk, the, the table area so they can plug into those when they want to.
Mm-hmm.
It's just if we're going to do it, do it now.
Yeah, because then what you can do, and this is what we've done with other offices, is you'll actually, instead of having them be open, you can have what are called a pop-up power and data station. And what they do is they just fold it halfway out.
Yeah.
And they fold halfway back in. Um, but the reason of doing this is because when I was rereading the, um, Sunnylink uh, quote, they had like four thousand feet of, of cabling for the whole building, security, everything. And I'm like, we're not going to cover all these spaces if we're estimating at four thousand feet. And the other thing we didn't have in the estimate were displays.
Right, he knows that.
And then we didn't have anything for, um, I don't remember what the other thing was.
Okay. Um, who was first over here? I didn't.
Ladies first.
Okay, ladies first.
So do you consider this a commercial building?
Well, I believe it comes under the commercial code, yes.
So with that being said, are we going to submit this to the plan commission under the terms of chapter eight and follow cha, or chapter eighty-one on uh, commercial building review and?
Yes, that was the intent, just like we did the shed.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, um, I do, I do quit, I'm still a little concerned how the parking and maybe that can we, is there a possibility we can pick up some parking Um, spaces by moving this building further back? And I, and this would be your job, you're gonna be the Knowles Nelson contact, right?
Right.
So if we're gonna put a building up next to a piece of Knowles Nelson property, do we have any setback requirements they're gonna impose on us? And I would think it doesn't make any difference whether it's this property or the other one, but it happens to pertain to this one too.
Okay, I'll ask when I'm, I'm talking about the other stuff. Okay, you had something?
It's simple, I'm talking out loud here for the phone setup is, we have the chief here. I think we should be leaving everything behind. Do you see that you're gonna be using what is in the offices here?
Uh, as far as what?
Phones.
Phones.
Um, so we only have one phone right now over there.
Well, for sure then.
So we could leave one phone over there and one phone here. That's all we would.
Is you, is your line of voice line now too?
Yes, we moved everything over to.
Both of them are, okay.
We moved everything over to vo- voice over IP.
Yes.
It was just too hard to keep AT&T.
No, I don't have a, it's just, it's nothing more than a question of just clarification.
Yeah, they ran over the cable three times in the.
No, I get it.
The summer before.
I knew, I heard all those things. I was just making sure.
So you just verify that with us, is what you want for phones, so we know. There's three in there now, so you just decide if you want three on the desk. Yeah. Okay, I just wondered if you wanted to keep one in that office and one in this office, so.
One of those.
Okay. One of.
Last question I have for you is the security cameras. Do we have a theoretical layout of what angles we would wanna capture on this building?
That's, I think Sunnylink is the one that was gonna lay that out for us. Cause he's gonna install them.
Yeah, and I think, you know, that can certainly be part of the conversation actually.
Yep.
Of where you want cameras to go.
Yeah, that's more my cu- my curiosity, cause as we look at the different angles. These pop-outs are really nice to look at, but they make blind spots really easy.
I know, I am aware. Anything else you wanna say to us, Bruce, although, go ahead.
The only other, the only other question I got is, do you want to provide uh, power assist? On the entrance, one of the entrance doors coming into the vest wheel?
That'd be nice.
Yeah. Why not?
Yeah, I'm gonna bring my scooter and everybody can see how easy it is.
I know, it makes a big difference.
No, we can just bring Matt.
Matt will have his, you can try it out. Um, I also talked to, um. Bruce about surveying this property and you did come back to me and say it has been surveyed, but the. Um, delineation has not been done for the wetland.
Correct.
Is that what I understand from you?
Yes, and that will be done in the spring.
And that's gonna be done by Stantec or by someone else?
The wetland delineation.
You can do it.
Stand.
Okay, so you guys will take care of that. Gotcha.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure we're all on the right page of the book here as we're moving forward.
Yep.
Okay.
And in, and the survey went far northwest, I think it went about twenty or thirty feet beyond where we're gonna locate the building. We didn't go all the way to the.
Okay.
With the survey.
But.
But we've got, we've got enough survey in order to do the building and get all the say, improve this.
Okay.
And, alright. Because that, that came up and you know. If we needed more parking, is the west side of the building the most likely place we're gonna be able to pull it from?
Oh, cause that's the wetland. The wetland is on the west side and we're gonna push that building as far as we can to get there. Plus thirty feet, remember we said we would back it back off thirty feet, so if there was ever an addition, they can go to the west thirty feet. But that wetland is, is in our way, so to speak. You're not gonna push it all the way out.
So there, there really isn't gonna be a future addition on the west side.
Well, we're backing it away from there thirty feet to allow that.
So could that thirty feet that you're backing it away to allow that, could that be parking? Instead of.
I'd ask him that. I don't, I don't know.
Because, and, cause my thought is, is if we're gonna be moving a building anyway, I think. As unpopular as it is, I think we should be pushing it towards the pavilion. I just wanna put that out and I'm gonna.
Well, there was a lot of pushback on that.
I know there, I know there's, I know there is pushback. I know there's pushback on it, but on the other hand. When it's raining and it's election and they can hang out in the pavilion or something's going on, they might be glad to be a little closer. I look at how close North Hudson is to their pavilions.
Yeah.
And we're not gonna want kids playing between our building and the pavilion. So I'm just gonna say unpopular or not, sometimes we have to take the hard road and we need, we need parking. I still believe that we're gonna need parking.
Wow. If we tried with parking in on the west side.
Yes.
That's basically drive in, park, come back out. You're gonna need at least forty feet with. For driveway and ending up hard.
And back up.
This isn't gonna be in and out people. This is gonna be staff. It's gonna be people that are gonna pull in and stay there when the election workers that.
No, but what he's saying, you still need forty feet.
You have to pull in and park, the, the parking space itself is gonna be needed now.
Yeah.
Boom.
So you need forty feet.
That would be at least eighteen feet.
Yeah.
In order.
And you'd have to back out of your spot into the major.
Yeah, cause when you drive a pickup truck, you need all of that space to do that.
So.
Yeah.
If we back off of the wetland thirty feet to allow for a twenty-four, thirty-foot expansion.
It would be minimal parking.
Isn't wide enough.
So you'd have to back out forty.
Porcelain to do temporary parking on the website. We, we have to push the building further east.
Okay.
To provide parking on that website.
So you're confident in us adding a six thousand square foot commercial building to this? And we hear that we don't have enough parking for the buildings that we have, that we have covered that topic of parking in addition to putting this building on?
I don't think the board has decided that.
Well, at what point?
We can decide that in the next two, in the next week. We can make that decision. Where this building gets placed does not affect this bid.
You're talking about the.
So the specifications that we're talking about make no difference where that goes right.
I say it does. If we can't come up with parking, then we've gotta, then we've gotta, we've gotta re- revisit what we're doing.
And I guess this, this is the first I've heard that.
Yeah.
We haven't got enough parking here, certainly plus adding, I think we're adding nine or ten spaces.
It's a question that comes up and that we talk to other people about if they wanna put a commercial building, where are you gonna park people? And we should follow our own questions. Is you gonna demo the pavilion and make it into a parking lot if it, if it doesn't work out?
Chris, what else did you wanna say? Anything?
Oh, I was just merely.
Following along.
It won't, educating on, on. Pulling into that type of parking spot, you'd have to back, back out of it. I just looked at it as a headache for most people. And then I, I'm hearing you about parking, but I look at, we do have a relationship with the church next door if we have overflow. I look at, it is a temporary issue for the evening that we're hosting an election or hosting some other event. Where I, I think people are resilient and have elasticity in what's going on for the evening.
So I will try to come back with an answer from the DNR as far as Knowles Nelson land is concerned and what our setbacks are on that. I will bring that back. We still have time to cite this building. There's no stakes over there, so we haven't cited it yet. So we still have si- time for that. I'm more concerned with getting this interior stuff done. So he can get the bid specs ready to go, so we get out to bid before it gets too late in the spring here. Anything else for him? Otherwise we'll move on. I appreciate you coming, Bruce, and we'll see you next Thursday.
Yeah.
Alright.
Thursday we're six o'clock.
Thursday here at six o'clock is correct. Okay, on to plan commission. There was an appointment for a member of an alternate position. I was not present for that meeting. But I did see the motions that took place and I'm just going to state this after talking with Terry and her discussion with our attorney. Proper procedure was not followed in the recommendation by the plan commission in the manner that they used for this appointment. The first motion to pass with a majority should have been the recommendation sent to the town chair. In this case, the commission continued to make another motion with a second recommendation after the first motion passed. The commission cannot continue to make second motions on the same subject unless the first motion has failed. In this case, it did not fail and this produces a chaotic non-decisions on a matter before the commission. In other words, if you're hearing anything before you, whether it is a subdivision or whatever. And person A makes one motion which passes and person B says, well, I wanna make a motion that says the exact opposite. Now you've both had majority say yes to those questions and what's the answer? There is no answer here. And I'm sorry to say for Mr. Secora, who has showed up repeatedly to these meetings. That if you read your ordinance and you read Robert's rules, what you did was completely incorrect. So therefore I'm going to make another motion to this plan commission. And I'm sorry to poke you again, but I'm gonna say this. That the motion is to send the recommendations, because you made two. For the appointment of the alternate member back to the plan commission and instruct them to follow proper procedure. As laid out in the Code of Ordinances, chapter thirty-five, and recommending a member to the commission to this chair and this board. And to follow the Robert's Rules of Order and come forward with one motion with one recommendation. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I'm sorry to throw this back at you, Anton, and I'm sorry I did not have time to call you about this in the interim, cause I've been traveling. But we can't have two motions on the same subject. It does not work. Thank you, Lee. Um, because we can't continue to do that. You have one motion and if the. And I mean, I could have taken your first motion and, and appointed that person to this commi- to this commission. But I feel like, I don't know that that's the will of the commission. From the fact that you did a second motion that was completely opposite of the first. So I'm really struggling with that and that's why I'm pushing it back at you.
Discuss.
Yes, go ahead. You have to put your mic on if you're to discuss.
So may I ask Teresa what you so eloquently just read to us? Were that, was that from you, Nick?
I didn't draft it, but I had a conversation with Terry uh, about what happened and effectively. There was a vo- a motion and a vote for an appointee.
Right.
And then there was a second motion and a vote for a different appointee.
Correct.
And then apparently there was a discussion about which appointee, um. The plan commission uh, would promote from the two. And there may have been a vote, but there was no motion. And, and so the action of the plan commission was to effectively recommend two people for one position. And not ultimately take a final position uh, or one single position uh, on that position. It should be noted that it's an, it's an alternate, so it's not as though uh, they are appointing a, a voting member. Uh, but you, you know, ultimately they can't make two motions um, and then not sort of clarify which person they are appointing to that particular position.
If the first motion would have failed. Say it went three, four. Then absolutely they could have made a, they could have made a second motion. But the first motion passed and the second motion passed and then there was a discussion that with no motion. That's kinda messy.
I think.
And the chapter thirty-five is very clear to the commission that they are supposed to make a recommendation to the chair. And I don't feel you did that.
I think, I think it's, I think it's clearly understood what happened that, so.
Um, so there's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Otherwise we'll take a vote.
So my, I'm just gonna go back, so there wasn't any correspondence or anything that you could have shared or put in the drive on what you just read?
I, I, no, I pulled this, I went and reviewed Robert's rules and I went and reviewed chapter thirty-five.
No, that's fine. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, and, and just to be clear, Madam Chair. If a motion passes and the body doesn't like the motion. Then the option at that point is to reconsider the motion potentially. But only a member of the prevailing side can make that motion under Robert's Rules of, of Order. So when, when you look at it, you, you can't take two votes on the same subject. And you know, ultimately the process is if somebody doesn't like what happens in the motion. Uh, there has to be a motion to reconsider and there can't be a conflicting motion. So that's, that was the confusion and hopefully it's clear moving forward as to what we're charging the, the plan commission to do.
So what my question would be is there's no, cause I, I saw this be used. This isn't a matter of suspending the rules or anything else like that. It's clearly, never mind, I, I understood. So there's no other action other than reconsideration at, immediately at the time, right?
Well, correct, and, and the issue on this one is that by the rules of the plan commission, there is one alternate.
Correct.
And there were two alternates recommended for the single alternate position. And so we can't square the vote of the plan commission. Uh, you can't suspend the rules and even make that work, right?
Right.
So it's, it's just a, it's a matter of understanding that you appoint one person and they took two votes and tried to appoint two different people.
It, I think it was an odd situation. I don't, I don't see any reason to expound upon this anymore and.
Well, I'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it passes. Again, Mr. Secora, I'm sorry that you had to show up again. I apologize for that, but it's going back to the plan commission. Thank you. I'm sorry, what? Oh, Lee's, I'm sorry. I couldn't see what you're saying. I apologize. I couldn't see, I couldn't see, okay? I couldn't see.
Starting to see Salam's spirit, yes.
Okay, um, anything on our chronic enforcement issues? I'm just gonna roll right down and we haven't gotten anything else on campgrounds. The Rolling Hills Trail Junkyard, I think you can speak to probably briefly, cause I know you've had some interactions.
Yeah, I've, I've reviewed some correspondence that's come through to Jay, which is always rather interesting in terms of what it says. Um, that being said, we have a demand letter out to Mr. Mashad. Um, and so we're, we're working through that, that piece of it. Nothing further to report at this point.
Um, the material, toxic materials off of thirty-seventh, if you read. Um, that, that's on our closed session, so you can update us then.
Sure.
The fire on highway thirty-five was in Jay's report and that is in our closed session, but I see that they are making progress. And they're waiting for the insurance company to remove the rest of the items, because the insurance company now owns them, is what I understand. Okay. Any other enforcement issues anyone wants to bring up?
The only other one that I, I have on my list is the Cox uh, property.
Yes.
Uh, the, the garage.
I think that's what I have on highway thirty-five here is that Cox property, so let's do that in close session.
Well, that could well be, um, okay, we can talk about that in close.
And then I know Todd Dolan has had an issue with someone who built a shed without a permit. That included water and electric in it and HX, so they're working through that.
And HX.
So you know, that's the way that goes.
So we'll be updated on close on that one.
So we will, once he gets through that.
Alright.
Anything else on enforcement that I don't know about?
So the only thing I'd like to add to enforcement is, is as everyone knows, there's gonna be snow coming. Please don't push it across the street.
Yay.
Please do not push snow across the streets, all I'm gonna ask.
Yep.
Thank you.
Amen. Okay, on to the update of ordinances. Um, these are on here for approval. They were put in the drive if I understand correctly. Anton, you wanna take the first one? Okay.
First one was.
Plan commission.
Yep, chapter thirty-five. Okay, so changes, changes made there were to correct the, um. Correct the reference to the chapter for zoning.
Um, yep.
To remove the references to county zoning. Fix a couple of references to Wisconsin statutes that have presumably changed, remove the Wisconsin Land Council, which in wonder exists. Rename the exclusive agricultural ordinance to the permanent preservation ordinance, which is under change. Aligning with state statute in which we already changed our ordinance. And that's pretty much.
Yeah, and it's pretty basic, but the biggest thing was to change us out of county zoning to our own.
Yep. Then I guess the one, the one other thing was to rename the town master, that's now what we now call the town.
Yeah, yeah. And you wanted to say what, Lori, on it?
Do we have people hanging online? Can you ask them if they can hear Anton speaking on that microphone as opposed to these that we're using right here? If it's any clearer for them?
Hey, Godley, can you hear Anton speak?
Yes, I can. Yes, I could.
Thank you, good.
Sorry, I couldn't find my mute button.
We just have to get Anton a really sensitive microphone. The last.
No, we had those fixed.
The last two Plan Commission's meetings, we cannot hear Anton when he is sitting where Lee usually sits.
We got that all fixed. We got it all fixed.
Beautiful.
Okay, I, I'm going to say this to you, Nick, because all of a sudden, this just occurred to me sitting there. Can we pass these changes as they are or do I have to have a resolution to pass an ordinance change? I think I can do it this way. Okay.
On our, so before you do that, Theresa, I'd like to have a short conversation because I have the same concern with, is this a amend and repeal or repeal and replace?
It's an amend.
And how does this amendment clearly get loaded into E-code instead of doing this just as an ordinance addition?
So how this goes to E-code is that they get a copy of the redlined one that you have in your drive and they get a clean copied one. And she sends both of them to them and they come back and verify with her that these are the correct changes and that this is the correct clean copy and then they import it all.
Is that how you always do it? Okay, good. I didn't understand that internal process. How that uploaded.
So you have to give them both of them. And the only ones that have to go to county are, our zoning ordinance has to go through county.
Yeah, my concern, my concern was the transition to get it into E-code so we're not sitting like our swimming pool one was.
Right, so our intent is, is that she's going to do these all at once because it's much cheaper to do them all at the same time. So if we pass three or four of these tonight, then we'll have a couple on our thing for next time. And probably in March, she'll send them all.
And how many are sitting there right now that haven't been? And what, which one was that?
That was the needs assessment on the fee schedule, on the fees ordinance.
I'm on board now. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve Chapter thirty-five Plan Commission ordinance with the amended changes.
Second.
And it's a roll call vote on ordinances. So get ready.
Chris Marshall? Laura DeRocher?
Aye.
Theresa Johnson?
Aye. And Matt Moore is not here to vote on that, so it's, that motion passed. Then on to Chapter one forty-four records.
This one is much simpler. References to statutes nineteen twenty-one, Section five, which should have been Section four. Section five is for counties, Section four includes bills and town boards. I simply removed the section number and the reference to.
Pretty simple. Who wants to make the motion on this one?
I make a motion to approve Chapter one forty-four records.
Second.
A roll call vote.
Laura DeRocher?
Aye.
Justin Cruz? Chris Marshall?
Aye.
Theresa Johnson?
Aye. Motion carried. So then we're on to roadway numbering. One fifty-one.
Fix some Wisconsin statute references. The sacred county planning and zoning office is now the community developments department. And I added a sentence at the end. There's a, we have a section basically saying it's the responsibility of the owner to maintain their address number. And they have a note that replacement signs can be ordered from the town at the expense of.
Very good, very good. Any questions on this one? I'll make a motion to approve the changes and amendments to Chapter one fifty-one roadway numbering or naming a house numbering. Roll call vote.
Theresa Johnson? Chris Marshall?
Yes.
Laura DeRocher?
Aye.
Justin Cruz?
Motion carried. We do not have snow and ice in our.
I didn't get it done.
Drive because she didn't get it done.
Oh, good.
So I'll be on for the next one and she'll send it off to Nick also. Are you going to have the temporary structure one come back to us?
Yes.
Okay, and I did see that there was some discussion regarding that October, May thing. That is state law. So that needs to be in there. So that our residents know that. You cannot have a tent that's not snow load rated in the wintertime. Or what?
Or building, because that covers buildings as well.
Well, buildings are different than tents.
So we want that to apply to tents.
Well, temporary structures are what? Structures that are built to withstand snow loads? Because they have to withstand snow loads. So you could word it in such a way that they have to have a snow load rating. You can decide how that's going to go, but that's state law.
So that's interesting. So if somebody has a hoop thing in there pulling a car underneath there.
That's not commercial, that's private.
So commercial is the key word.
So if you go up to Dragonfly Winery, here's a perfect example. They have that great big structure out the back of that winery and they have canvas over the top of it. So structurally, it's a tent. But the structure holds it and they can have it up in the wintertime because they put sidewalls on it. So it's a tent with a structure that's holding it up. So it's completely posted and beamed all the way across it. And it's open all year round. Perfect example of how to do it the right way. Yeah, oh yeah, you can go outside any day of the week.
For those temporary structures, would you include something like those iglues that they use out of like Pier five hundred?
They have to be still rated.
You can't put your bed in there either unless it's snow rated.
Not commercial.
If you, if you're going to invite the public in, then it becomes commercial and it falls under the commercial code.
All right, I'm going to move on and you're going to bring hopefully some of those other ones back. I should have the emergency management one will be back to you in April meeting and because there will be changes in the board and it includes names and addresses of board members in the emergency management plan, so I don't want to do it until April, but I've taken care of all the red lines on it and sent it to the chief so he can weigh in and then it'll be ready to go after the election, so we'll know.
Anton, thank you for continuing to work on the ordinances. Very time. I know it's time consuming having done it before, so thank you very much for doing that.
And it was interesting in our WTE magazine, that was one of the things they said for housekeeping. When's the last time you reviewed your ordinances? And I went, oh, well, we're on top of that. We're doing good. Okay, ARPA funding, I don't have anything in the ARPA funding to ask you to pay for, but we will keep this on. Terry and I have spoke about this ARPA funding and the amount of reporting that has to take place with it. And because we're making interest on this money right now, so the money will be greater than what we thought. But we're considering, we're going to bring it back to the board when the time comes, that we would be paying our contractor bills with that because they're bigger bills and you don't have to track as much. So if we go to bid and we get a bid on this and then a contractor comes back for his first bid, his first pay request and asks for a hundred thousand, we can pay that out of ARPA and continue just paying that contractor so that you don't have to track everybody else. So you're not tracking the sewer guy or the well guy or whatever. You're just tracking that one. Her job will be a lot easier if we do it that way, so that's our intent. Isn't that nickel and diamond out just to pay it out?
What about Bruce's? Is that the giant one?
It's not giant, but that again, then you're starting to nickel and dime it out and you have loan money to pay his with. We're talking about taking, because the reporting, the reporting on this is difficult at best. And the easier we can make it for her to report, the better off we are.
I thought we had a login that you had to create when you.
Oh yeah, she's got all that, but then the form that you fill out.
Is nasty.
Yeah, because I've done it for the town of Hudson and it is incredible. It's taken days to get it done. And I'm trying to make, having been through this, I'm saying, let's just pay the contractor bill with ARPA funds and you only have one person, one entity that you're paying and you're not using it for anything else. Your loan money can pay the rest of it. Okay, so we'll move on for that. Elections inspectors, Terry, should I say, had second thoughts?
I actually really read through it and reviewed it. It's probably better.
She had second thoughts. So she wanted to change the pay grade and she redlined it to you and it's pretty simple. She just felt strongly that we have people already at this pay and she did not want to lower them, so.
So before we get into the minutia of this, we recently gave our chiefs a wage, a price adjustment. Do we know when that was?
No, we haven't. It's been years.
When was the last, okay, so when was the last?
Probably twenty.
So twenty twenty, because I was digging around trying to see if I could figure that out. What about the election workers?
I want to say close to that. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. It wasn't last year.
Was it in, have you ever given your election worker a wage change and you came on in twenty twenty?
Because they lost Nicole for the April twenty twenty election, that's how I remember.
That's history. So yeah, I do kind of the same thing, Theresa. So I thought there was discussion to give the chiefs a raise and it was separate from the other workers because I remember questioning that at the same time. And our workers don't, if you're an election worker, there's no seniority. Everybody gets the same, the same whether you've done it for twenty years or whether you get, just, it's the first, first go around, correct?
Yes, unless they're, you know, trying to become a chief inspector, then they can move on.
That's a different.
That's different. Everybody gets paid the same.
Can we put in open meeting, you're going to tell us, well, I'll let you go from there. I just wanted to know when the last time on record that we know of that these people were given increases or wage adjustments?
So I'm looking at the red line document in the drive.
So the document's what we had passed?
Yep, and it looks like the, there's three red lines or the responsibilities and training requirement, one red line for pay.
Right, yes.
I'm a little behind on my documents here.
So we changed the election inspector two, we had had it fifteen and she has asked us to put it back at sixteen, which is where they had been.
Just a minute, hold on.
And those have been people that have worked previous elections, not new people. They're not the newbies.
Sure.
So you turned your head. What did you say?
I said that in the election inspector two was at fifteen, but they had prior to this been at sixteen. So she asked us to put them back at sixteen. That's the biggest change.
Do you need a motion or what?
Yeah, to approve, approve this.
So wait, they.
We basically gave them a pay cut based with our change.
And she didn't catch it when we approved this.
That's why I'm wondering why. So when, when did that happen?
December.
Got it, so. We're just correcting what we thought we talked about once before.
Do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we increase the pay for the election officials.
No, just for two.
Second discussion.
Well, that's not what this says, so it's only for election inspector two.
For election inspector two.
Okay, I'll second it again. But again, I just answered, here's the answer I have. We do have three different pay rates for election people.
This is new. So everybody that's worked in election is going to be making sixteen dollars. All the new people that she's training this month will be making twelve. Because what we found was.
Seventeen fifty.
That's for people who want to take on the additional training to become a chief inspector.
That's an interim level.
Interim level. And the reason we dropped the new ones to twelve that are coming in is because we found two years ago in that cycle, we lost about a third of them and had to pay them for their election inspector training at sixteen dollars an hour. Why are we doing that? All of the municipalities around us are dropping this because they drop out. I mean, you have, you have someone who's been here all day, election training, then goes, you know, I can't tell anyone to do anything. So don't ask me to do this job. I said, you can't tell them to put their ballot in the machine. She goes, no, 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 no. Well, now we have to pay her. If we, this saves us a lot of money by only having to pay twelve.
Well, without it and having that part of the discussion. What's Wisconsin minimum wage these days? I don't even.
Seven twenty-five.
Oh, well, then twelve is good. Never mind.
So you made a motion for this increase in election inspector two and those changes that are on there, you agree with the changes that are on there and we'll take a vote?
Changes are, they've changed the word of terms to years. Correct.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, that passes. And then she has one additional person who was asked to be an election worker that was not appointed at our last meeting.
Yeah, correct.
And it's Carrie Lance, right?
Yes.
And she came to you how?
She came on the, one of the lists for the political parties. But she was on vacation and out of the country. So she didn't get back to us. We thought she wasn't interested, but then she called when she returned and she is interested. So I'd like to add her to the list.
Carrie Lance?
Make a motion to hire Carrie Lance for election worker.
Second. All those in favor, say aye. I approved it, passes. The kennel license for Mary Tyson and John Ringhofer was there. I'd already looked at, anyone want to make that motion?
I make a motion to accept a kennel license for Mary Tyson and John Ringhofer.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, it passes. And then the generator alert information and quote, well, the quote, I could have taken it off and it didn't get off, but the information is they have not gotten back. Oh, they did. I'm sorry.
Update, yeah. They did. They put in, I had to send them an email to put in the phone numbers for myself, Theresa and Zach to be on the alert system. So if something happens, you'll get a text or a call.
So now we're on our automatic alert system for that generator instead of having to go physically and check it. It's going to send us a text message or on our phones.
Is it go, I presume it's Zach number one?
Yeah, Zach is first. I think it goes to all. I don't know that it's.
Somebody's out of town who's ever here can come over and see what's going on. Anyone have any questions on that? And then public records requests. Have we, we've had some more since and I don't think you have your list with you.
I don't. I haven't updated. I've had a lot of record requests. So I'll have to update the chart and I'll put it in the.
Can you give me just a broad? What type of request are they making? I don't need to know who made it or.
Just meeting recordings, minutes, documents from some of the meetings and documents from other, you know, like other complaints in the area, that type of thing.
Is there any of those requests that are coming in that they could get this information off of our website? It isn't, okay.
I think you had a lot of them having to do with the paperwork submitted for candidates.
A lot was candidate stuff. That was some of it, not all of it.
So she'll get that updated. So the next thing on here is a fee schedule update. And if you remember, at our last meeting, we approved that policy for public records requested conforms now with state law. What we had in our fee schedule did not. And so the fee schedules in here with yellow highlights, a couple of things that we updated, we updated Chapter one oh one, the impact fees. Because we added the nine ninety-nine for roadways and trails. That was part of our fee thing that we changed on impact fees. And then we also towards the end, you will see where according to our policy we did, which is the state law, it's fifty dollars per hour after the first hour to be paid in advance if over five dollars. So that's that. Also, we added the background check that the state of Wisconsin is requiring us to have at seven dollars a background check because now we are required for anyone that applies for anything having to do with alcohol, including the owners of the businesses, to have a background check. And that's the new state law on alcohol licensing. So that's in there. And in addition, we added the fifteen dollars per page plus twenty-five dollars setup charge for large scale plat-type stuff. And the reason I say that. And the reason I say that and put that in here is because as deputy clerk over at the town of Hudson, I cannot tell you how many times we get those requests. And you have to take them somewhere to get them printed and there's a setup charge plus per page. So that's been added.
That's kind of an interesting question that I was thinking about today because it used to be these, the, the, the developers and the people coming in with presentations, they were bringing these large page documents.
Yeah.
And that was part of it with.
But you have people ten years later that want a copy of it.
That type of copy, so.
And if you live other places, many times the county clerk's office has that. It's a lot harder to dig out of their office than it is here. So they come to the township saying, can I get a copy of the plat in mine?
No, I just was wondering what the circumstances was when we were asking our developers and surveyors and these people coming that they were supposed to bring in these documents, where are they? So never mind, I was using the wrong circumstance.
Yep. And then at the very last thing on page twenty-one, under the fire department related fees, we are charging people with unpermitted fires, seven fifty a time, plus two hundred for every two hours after that. I added that in here because it wasn't enumerated, even though that's what we've been doing. And also asked to have the second offense be doubled. So if you have to have repeated calls to your house because you have an unpermitted fire going that requires a fire department to show up, it's gonna cost you.
So the people not calling into the sheriff's department would be an unpermitted fire?
Right. Not the sheriff's department, they call into dispatch. So those are the changes on the fee schedule. Does anyone want to make a motion to pass that with those changes?
Question before.
Go ahead.
Um, under the research, if I'm looking, I, I'm not understanding in advance over five dollars to be paid.
In other words, you have to pay in advance if the cost of it is over five dollars. So say she gets a request and it takes her sixty-five minutes to do. The sixty minutes is free. The five minutes is not.
Okay.
So the five minutes is gonna cost about four dollars. They can pay her when they come in.
Okay.
Otherwise, she's had requested or say two and a half, three hours of time. She can request that money upfront.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that if the verbiage is clear that
Yeah.
that's something that could be communicated to someone making a records request.
Yep, and it's in that policy.
I'm sure it is. I just want to make sure if they just looked at the fee schedule, they're like, what do you mean fifty for over five?
Did we get a motion?
I make a motion to approve the new and improved fee schedule for twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it passes. And we will go to approval of town board minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for December twenty-fourth and December twenty-eighth.
Twenty-fourteenth, twenty-eight.
It's a fourteen.
Fourteenth, excuse me, and December twenty eighth.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that passes. Budget invoices, checks and balances, we don't have the final twenty twenty-three budget for you. That'll be ready at our next meeting. But you got a copy of all the checks. Did anyone have any questions regarding this? Otherwise, I'll make a motion for the checks. I'll make a motion to approve all checks starting at two, four, six, two, eight through two, four, seven, two, one, including the fund transfers and the payroll liabilities.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any ayes over there?
Aye.
Aye.
More, more, motion carried. Just making sure. Anything on that you want for the next agenda?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I would like to have updated information on the discussion of impact fees for a, a new facility. It seemed to me that I made this request before and I can't find where there was any follow-up, whether.
Okay.
I, I found what I thought it was and then I, and further look consideration and looking at it, that just turned into the stuff for a new building.
Okay.
And I, so I just wanna know, I wanna have a discussion about this and whether we can collect impact fees to pay the loan in the future.
Okay, anything else from anybody?
Um, yes, I wanna know, also know if there was a letter sent out to the owners of the mobile home park regarding their cat bill.
No, it was not sent to the owner of the mobile home park. We had decided to send it to the owner of the animals.
Okay, and did that happen? Okay. And good, so that, can we have that on for an update for next month? On how we're doing with that, if there's any response, if there's.
Has there been any response? You can answer quick. No.
Was it just sent regular snail mail or did you send it return receipt or some type of documentation? Can?
I don't honestly know that answer. Michelle sent it out.
Can we find out that answer? I can have a follow-up up if we have not responded that we sent, should send him a second one?
Okay, anything else for anybody? Yes, sir.
Is there gonna be an agenda for your next Thursday evening at six o'clock?
It's coming out hopefully tomorrow. It's just a work session.
Oh, I, I.
Yeah.
There's a work session. Is it gonna include things like media? Like injectors and things like that.
Well. Um, we're talking about primarily electrical and data. Was that what we call it?
Yeah.
As far as this system that we have here, this is being moved over to that building by ASI who installed it. And we have a contract with them. So our costs on that will be, I won't say minimal, but will be in line because they're.
We're only gonna be having.
It's gonna have televisions. It's gonna be having a hanging television.
The layout's gonna change where it's gonna be more visible for folks who are over there to be able to see this, because that's been my feedback. Because I sit right here and I have trouble seeing it.
Years ago when I was on board, I always just have my computer put up displays of
Yeah.
Things. We don't see that anymore. I mean, we don't see diagrams and things being projected up anymore. That's why I was wondering if we're gonna have multiple viewing areas to see what you're seeing up here.
Yes, we can do that.
I was gonna say, we need someone to, to manage that part to get it to the screen.
So, you know.
Well, tonight we did. You showed all the neighbors.
Yeah, I got that up there. It's, it's.
That was on a single. But you have one for one for the broadcast system.
Oh. That's a little difficult to do. I know on county, when you go there, all of their TVs automatically turn over to whatever they're showing. And then it comes back to the room and then it goes back to the, you know.
Oh, does that come up with the question that we need a person that best their job during these meetings is to manage the?
Oh, jeez.
I'm just saying that.
But you're not, so you're just moving, that's, that's nothing new.
No.
It's not like it's just.
No, I don't think there's anything new.
No. Okay. I, I messed up, guys, on the fee schedule. We had to do it by resolution and I had it in your drive and I apologize. So the resolution, I'll just do it. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh one, updating the town of St. Joseph fee schedule.
Say it.
Thank you. Roll call vote. Thanks for catching that, Terry. Oh, my God.
Uh, Teresa Johnson?
Yes.
Chris Marshall?
Yes.
Laura DeRocher?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, that passed. Anything else for the next meeting that you can think of? Otherwise, we're gonna go into closed session quick. Thanks, everyone, for coming.
I make a motion to go into closed session under Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five subsection G.
Azera, Jay, you can stay if you want. Is there a second? Who's gonna second?
Second.
Um, roll call vote.
Laura DeRocher?
Aye.